Good evening. Apologize for our three-minute delay. I would like to call the meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would our acting deputy city manager like to call the roll?
Sure.
Poor guy. Our city clerk is making copies, so.
Yep, I guess I can do that. Give me one second. I'll write it down. Excuse me if I'm going out of order.
No worries. You can just go down the line. It's fine.
I'll just go down the line. Councilmember Hanzak.
Did you say my name?
Are you here?
Present. I am present. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Small.
Chilling, never ill.
Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Mayor Cersei.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
I'm here.
Councilmember Gibson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Folcher.
Present.
Everyone's present, Mayor.
Everyone is here. Thank you so much. Well done.
Even.
Well, we are continuing tonight budget reconciliation amongst other things. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. So we will be having, starting with a proclamation for Bike to Work Day, followed by general public comments, council comments, city manager comments, and we will also have our reconciliation. That'll be a budget work session, and then we will have a work session and discussion of the draft budget ordinances as well as the city council's subcommittees. In terms of upcoming agendas, for folks that were not aware, on Monday, we met, and there was the public hearing on the tax rate, as well as a public hearing on the 2024 budget, as well as a budget reconciliation work session. Next Wednesday, we will have, we will start at 7:30. We'll have the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 tax rates, council vote to convene as a stormwater management board, first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 stormwater management budget, and then the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 budget. We will also have a presentation by the Grants Review Committee. They saw and received their recommendations, as well as a work session on the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project Contract Award Recommendation and Draft Ordinance. On the following Wednesday, the 17th, we will have our second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 tax rates. The council will vote to convene as a stormwater management board, and then we'll have the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 stormwater management budget, the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 budget, single reading ordinance adopting the city manager to sign a contract for the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project, as well as the single reading ordinance approving grant awards. We will also have a work session on the 2022, I'm sorry, 2023 legislative wrap-up and discussion of 2024 legislative priorities. On Wednesday, May the 24th, council will meet at 7:30. We will have a, for the record, National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation, and that is on June the 2nd, which is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I want to encourage folks to wear orange. A presentation from the Montgomery Planning, on the planning department, on the minor master plan, as well as a work session on the minor master plan and a discussion of the council draft resolution. And then Monday, May the 29th, is Memorial Day, and in honor of Memorial Day, we will not have a council meeting on Wednesday, May the 31st. So with that, I would like to move to our first agenda item. For the record, Bike to Work proclamation. Whereas bicycle commuting is an effective means to improve air quality, reduce traffic congestion, and conserve energy; and whereas bicycle commuting benefits both employees and employers through better employee health and fitness, reduce commuting and parking costs; and whereas the low cost of biking, commuting, bicycle commuting saves money otherwise spent on fuel, private vehicle maintenance, and parking; and whereas the City of Tacoma Park is implementing bikeways improvements throughout the city to encourage and facilitate safe and convenient travel by bicycle; and whereas Capital Bike Shares Regional Bike Sharing System continues to expand with over 600 stations in Maryland, the District of Columbia, and Virginia; and whereas the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments promotes bicycling and organizes Bike to Work Day along with the Metropolitan Area Bicycleist Association; and whereas Tacoma Park Housing and Community Development Staff coordinates two Bike to Work Day pit stops in the city in partnership with local businesses; and whereas the week of May 15th through the 22nd is National Bike to Work Week, which promotes bicycling as a viable means of transportation to and from work. Now, therefore, I, Talisha Cersei, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, hereby proclaim Friday, May the 19th, 2023, as Bike to Work Day in Tacoma Park, and encourage all residents and local employees to register to Bike to Work by visiting www.biketoworkmetrodc.org. Great. So I want to encourage people to Bike to Work. So with that, we are going to move into general public comments. So let's start with folks in the auditorium. Do we have any general public comments for today? Don't be shy. Don't be shy. I know. I didn't say it. I'm glad you did, Tom.
There you go. Is it on? Yes. Karen Elrich from Ward 5. It's about the budget, but not about this budget. As I've watched us go through this process in five weeks, it's an impossible chore. And I'm really looking forward to starting real early this year about working on the budget. And the city has this great program called the Balancing Act that's been purchased that comes with a year-long salary for someone to help set it out. And the Balancing Act is this incredible program that allows you to look at the budget in real time and be able to manipulate it. And I think that's the best way to educate myself, anyway, on how the budget works, how it can work, and how we can change it, and how we are able to make changes and do it in an intelligent way. So I'm asking if you would please put that up. We do have it. It has been purchased. And there is somebody, I believe there is a salary attached to it for one year to help us go through that project. So I'm really pushing that. Another thing I wanted to talk about is that Susan Chung, you're going to be going to the Government Finance Officers Association this month, which is an incredible place to get information. And I would love you guys to ask her to bring back some stuff on priority-based budgeting, which is really hot going now in a lot of the cities, so that we can take a look at that and see if that's something that we want to do. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments for tonight?
Good evening. My name's Jacque Lemoine. I live in Ward 2. Unlike Jonathan Griffith, former mayor Kate Stewart's husband, I don't think that careful consideration of the property tax rate proposed by the city is a mark of republicanism. Remember, people pay tax bills, not tax rates. At first glance, it sounds terrific that property values are on the rise, but when this translates into tax bills from the city being equal to, and in some cases more than a homeowner's mortgage payment, something's amiss. This is now the Cersei administration, not the Stewart administration. You're allowed to put forward your own vision. There's no need to rely on what hasn't worked well for all of the city's residents in past years. Profligate spending is not a progressive democratic value. Development is not necessarily the best answer. Property owners of businesses don't always pay their fair share of property taxes due to being allowed to make payments in lieu of taxes and to getting, and to getting tax abatements granted at the city, county, and state levels. Tacoma Park doesn't collect a sales tax. This is a function of the state government. I appreciate that councilmembers Gibson and Dibala looked into a possible new source of revenue based on an idea I had when researching dumpster permit fees and regulations in surrounding municipalities. Ms. Dibala contacted me today to relay that it is too late in the budget process to implement any changes that would result in new revenue. This is why I'm focused on reducing city expenditures as a way to keep the property tax rate in check and on starting the city's budget process earlier, as in August or September of each year. Another area for review is the amount of money that the city spends on contracts, as well as the costs associated for the implementation of grants awarded to the city. Councilmember Dibala mentioned in a message to me that she thinks that local school counselors were contacted when the Direct Cash Assistance Program was first implemented. So change of subject there. I would like to see proof of this outreach. I can ferret it out myself, but if you have proof that this outreach was done, please share it. Has similar outreach been done to the residents of residential elder care facilities and daycare facilities located in Tacoma Park? I'm still holding out a shred of hope that the city's ARPA money will go to those who need it most, not to capital improvement projects, and not to staff salaries. And I just wanted to do a little ad hoc addition to the Bicycle Bike to Work Day. If you want more people to get off the roads and get on their bikes, we need to make sure that the owners of these multifamily buildings, no matter how large or how small, provide residents with a safe place to store their bike. And one of the things that I saw during the pandemic when I was teaching virtually is, you know, I would see the insides of my students' homes. And in many cases, families were doing what's called "hot bunking", where a few members of the family would be at work, and while they were at work, other members of the family were sleeping in those spots, oftentimes on the floor and sleeping mats. Where are you going to put a bike? And that's just something to think about. If we're going to be giving pilots and tax abatements, we need to make our building owners a little bit more responsible. And again, it would support the idea of getting the cars off the road and getting people onto their bikes. Got to have a safe place to store it. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
7063 Carroll Avenue. My name is Peter Friedrich, and good evening. Two weeks ago in India, a man named Babu Bajrangi was acquitted on charges that he helped to lead a massacre in the 2002 Gujarat pogrom. Bajrangi is unique among acquitted perpetrators of that atrocity because he was caught on camera boasting about how he had personally slaughtered Muslims in the pogrom. He even bragged about how Modi, the head of the state at the time, sanctioned the violence. So what does all of this have to do with the City of Tacoma Park? Well, the acquittal of people like Bajrangi illustrates the current situation in India. After Modi rose to national power as prime minister, persecution of Indian Muslims under his regime has ramped up so rapidly that international experts are warning that the unchecked and state-tolerated Islamophobia there now verges on outright genocide. Muslims are beaten or lynched in the streets, mosques are burned or bulldozed, and those who call it out are arrested at such a rate that it's impossible to keep up with every new and terrifying development. This directly connects to us in America, in Maryland, and in Tacoma Park, partly because the currently ruling Modi regime gained power to a large extent with the help of a US-based outfit called the Overseas Friends of the BJP. The OFBJP from America mobilized thousands of people to travel back to India to serve as campaign workers for Modi in the months leading up to his election. The OFBJP set up phone banks around America to call Indian voters and tell them to back Modi's party. And the OFBJP also reached out to American elected officials at federal, state, and even city levels to get their help promoting Modi in America despite the fact that he had been banned from this country for his role in the 2002 pogrom. One such politician who got looped in with the OFBJP was Maryland's Aruna Miller. For example, she attended a 2014 OFBJP banquet to celebrate Modi's election, and there she called him a rock star. She even brought in a local OFBJP activist to serve as treasurer for one of her campaigns. Later, that same OFBJP activist co-hosted a fundraiser for her, a fundraiser at which she said that she would not be where she is today if not for his support from day one when she first ran for public office. Incidentally, the current president of the OFBJP also joined that fundraiser. Well, aside from the fact that the OFBJP worked to put Modi into office despite him having earned the nickname "The Butcher of Gujarat", the real problem here is that the OFBJP is now a registered foreign agent in America. So my appeal to the Tacoma Park City Council in light of the true nature of the OFBJP is that you avoid making the same mistake as other Maryland politicians like Aruna Miller have made, and that if and when the OFBJP ever does approach you, you refuse to associate with this registered foreign agent, which is acting in America on behalf of an Islamic, of an Islamophobic genocidal regime back in India. And I have for every member of the council an information packet about this broader issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
I think you know by now, I'm Tom Gackliardo, and I always say I'm your neighbor because I am. Let me confirm why I consider all of you, each and every one of you, my neighbor. I recognize that each and every one of you is smart, committed, hardworking, and sincerely motivated. I trust that your intention is to do the right thing. But as Lyndon Johnson, President Lyndon Johnson, said, "Doing the right thing is not the problem. Knowing what the right thing is, that's the challenge." Two days ago, I congratulated you for taking the bull by the horns and tacking tusk. I hope I don't have to take those words back. But by the end of Monday's meeting, the periphery fence was down, and bull was all over the place. I watched the trash truck discussion on cable TV after I left the meeting. The rationale for replacing it, as I understand what was said, is that the truck is 13 years old, and there are high maintenance costs. I think the figure mentioned was $8,000 or slightly more than 2% of the purchase price of a new truck. And I congratulate Councilmember Gibson for his observation on this very point. However, I question whether even the $8,000 figure is correct. If the work was done by either or both of the two mechanics on the Public Works payroll, the work they do is part of their salary. So only parts and work done outside should be considered when assessing the maintenance cost that purportedly indicate that replacement is necessary. What I didn't hear is that the truck can't be used for at least one more year. What I did hear is that the Public Works Department has five trucks, three of which are simultaneously on the road and two backups. If there are two backups, I have to ask this question. How often has it happened that the city was unable to put three trucks on the road at the same time? And the further question, how often is that likely to happen in the future? Those are rhetorical questions. The answer is obvious. And what is going to happen to the truck that is being replaced? Most likely, it'll be purchased at auction by another municipality or a private trash hauler who will, drumroll, please, continue to use the truck not only this year, but into the future. Same question regarding the truck that's not on the so-called reconciliation list. I see I'm almost out of time. I presented to the city clerk my extended remarks. So I won't go into the discussion about the two wreck buses, but I do see that the information provided by staff hardly justifies even replacing one bus with a new bus. Fix the lift. Don't buy a new bus. Let's keep in mind what President Barack Obama said. You either believe we're all in this together, or you don't. I believe we're all in this together. I hope you do, too. And one last thing. Does a city of 17,000 people really need a full-time arts and culture coordinator? Really? Let's have that discussion. It's a long discussion. It happens the next time, but it's got to be had, and I'll be glad to join you in that discussion. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other general public comments?
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is David Bloxstein. I'm a resident of Ward 3. I spoke to you Monday night via Zoom on behalf of the Tacoma Park Mobilization Environment Committee, 100 or so climate activists. And I talked about the importance of filling the sustainability manager position as soon as possible to take advantage of the unprecedented availability of federal, state, and county money for a just transition to clean energy economy. Tonight, I want to make two points. One is that it is crucial to maintain the salary level advertised for the Sustainability Director, which is $85,000 to $95,000 in the current position description. And second, the value of the city's Clean Energy Grants Program to support the twin goals of equity and climate action. I work for Bard College, our graduate programs in sustainability. I co-direct the Worldwide Teach-In on Climate and Justice. There was a comment on Monday night suggesting that rather than having the high-level Sustainability Manager that we have now, that this job could be filled by a recent graduate or master's program. I work with students all the time. We have great students, but they are not ready to provide the kind of leadership, strategic leadership, to deal with the structural issues of climate justice that the city needs and to be able to prepare, to research, represent the city, and to prepare our competitive proposals for the money that's available. Secondly, the Grants Program. This is an important tool to enable a just transition. The funding enables low- and moderate-income residents to improve their residences and their health by installing energy efficiency retrofits and getting off of toxic fossil gas. In 2023, 80% of the grants went to residents of Wards 5 and 6. This is entirely consistent with this council's intention to reduce the financial burden to the city residents, especially those who need it the most. This is a critical juncture to address sustainability in Tacoma Park, to take advantage of the resources, and to advance climate equity. I ask you to support the full funding, as advertised, for the Sustainability Director and for the program budget to implement energy efficiency grants and outreach, especially to the wards that had not been reached well in planning the Climate Action Plan in 2020. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments? Come on down.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is John Rogers. I live in Ward One at 7425 Baltimore Avenue, and I biked to work for 25 years. Well, I'll tell you, I'm really confused by what I saw happen at Monday's meeting and by the revised reconciliation worksheet that came out this morning. Based on the initial reconciliation worksheet, I came into Monday night hopeful that we could strike a balance between taxes and spending that protected the most vulnerable in the city. But then I thought I saw any chance of striking a balance vanish as I saw council members running away from their proposed spending cuts faster than the Road Runner being chased by Wile E. Coyote. I was like, wow, that's something. But then I saw the revised reconciliation worksheet that came out this morning, and many of the capital expenditure deferrals and other cuts are back in there. What happened? I'm kind of looking at this revised reconciliation worksheet, and I don't know what to believe. It's kind of like trying to guard Dr. J. You know a head fake is coming, and your only chance to stop him is to be ready for that head fake when he tries to slip by. After Monday night, I find myself wondering whether the revised reconciliation worksheet issued this morning is a head fake. My posture on that is: Trust, well, kind of, but verify, most definitely. I next want to turn to a comment made at Monday's meeting by a commenter that you and Mayor and Council seem to pay an extraordinary amount of attention to. That commenter suggested that those of us standing up for the elderly, those on fixed incomes, and renters are Republicans because we are pushing the traditional American values of living within your means and of thrift and of fiscal responsibility. This commenter suggested that these values are Republican values, not Tacoma Park values. It is truly, truly inane to suggest that those of us standing up for the elderly, on fixed incomes, and renters are espousing Republican values because we are asserting these traditional American values. These values are not Republican values. They are American values, and they are Tacoma Park values, and I am proud of those values. Who knows whether responsible expenditure reductions would even be on the table right here, right now, had so many people motivated by these values not stepped forward? I am proud, really proud, to have stood up for our fellow residents, and in doing so, standing up in my own little way for a better America. While I celebrate, that commenter is right to make those comments. Absolutely. Those comments are ill-considered, and they are off the mark. So, you have a choice to make. You can follow the path you took Monday night, and like tired taxing spenders, you can just raise taxes, run away from budget cuts, keep on deficit spending, and buy new shiny, expensive, and not-needed gizmos. If you follow that path, you'll be telling the many people who spoke to you during the budget process that you don't care about the financial impact of increased property taxes, and that they may as well move out of the city and make way for more affluent residents. Or you can follow Tacoma Park's rich and traditionally forward-looking progressive history by having the courage to cut irresponsible spending and to bring the city's finances back into line. I hope you choose the latter course. The choice is yours, and Tacoma Park is watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
My name is Phil Shapiro. I'm here to speak about the proposed 2% salary increase for union members. I'm a union member and have been working for our public library for the past 18 years. You might recognize my name from the Spirit of Plaque in the hallway out there. My name is listed there beside that of Jamie Raskin. Like many Americans, I have medical and dental bills that are overdue. I have car maintenance and repairs that I have deferred, but I get great satisfaction for my job helping community members. Recently, I helped several hundred community members apply for the $1,000 cash relief from ARPA funds. When I saw how well this process worked, I considered applying for myself. My salary, after 18 years, is just a little above the poverty threshold for the ARPA relief funds. With the 2% pay increase, I'll be able to tell my doctors and dentists that my overdue bills can now get paid. I'm not sure what I'll be telling my car mechanic, though.
Do we have any other general public comments?
Paul Hubner, Ward Three. Budget time is really the only time you have the opportunity to prioritize where you spend our hard-earned tax dollars and what you spend them on. Budget time is the only time you have the opportunity to address the equity and fairness of the taxes placed on city residents. Budgets are about values, about choices, and about management and allocation of limited resources. Over the last few weeks, we have heard many presentations from city staff on what their staffing, salary, and equipment needs are. We've heard that council members, our elected representatives, have been having in-depth budget discussions with the staff. We have also heard from city residents over the last few meetings telling you that these chronic, ongoing property tax increases are unsustainable for many residents. I hope you have heard, and that you are listening to those of us who pay those taxes. By now, you should understand that property taxes are a burden for retired residents and those with low or fixed incomes, both homeowners and renters alike, new young families and middle-income families with child and elder care needs. As a decades-long resident, I can tell you that I paid over $1,800 last month alone on medications and doctor's visits. Like many others, I'm on a fixed income. I also hope you heard other residents who said that Tacoma Park's ever-increasing property taxes, the highest municipal taxes in the state, are forcing them out of their homes. Many also face the possibility that they cannot afford to move. What next for them? This is what gentrification, this is what urban renewal looks like. I have not heard this council speak as compassionately of our neighbors as of the staff. Do you hear us? We are told of the absolute necessity of more FTEs, two per year over the last 10 years, increased benefits and wage and salary increases for city staff. City wages increased from 6.5% to 10% last year. The COLA for Social Security was 5.9%. This year's budget proposes property tax increases of 10%, 10.1% really, while the COLA rose 8.7%. How will we keep up? What are the residents who come before you? Do you hear us? We are watching and waiting again and again. Who will speak for the elderly, the infirm, the hungry, and the near-dispossessed? Do you hear us? I want to point out that we have heard that the tax rate has been the same for many years. However, the annual increases in taxes paid is driven not only by the rate but by the enormous increases in the assessed values of private homes and apartment buildings. In the current proposed budget, the property tax rate will increase. At the same time, average home assessments have risen by over 4%. The newly proposed tax rate will increase average property taxes paid out of pocket by over 10%. I made it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other general public comments?
Kelly Skelton from Ward Six. I would like to address the council regarding the budget reconciliation session from Monday. I was here for that session, and I spoke at that time in support of the Acting City Manager's proposed tax rate. Do I want my taxes to increase? No. And it would be nice if the council could work together to find savings that would allow the tax to decrease. Although regardless of what happens in this room tonight, my taxes will go up as Montgomery County is raising our taxes by quite a bit, by more than the proposed increase of Tacoma Parks. And in support of my library worker, the federal COLA this year is 8.7%, so 2% seems to look. It's my opinion. I was also very confused by the work session that I witnessed compared to both the council's stated priorities, as well as the role of the council in the fiscal policies of the city. Some examples: The lengthy discussion on the cuts from the planned ERR fund, the famous trash truck. Note that this discussion was not about the funding to the ERR designated funds, but what should be done with those funds that are already designated. Regardless of cutting the trash truck, you are not decreasing my taxes unless you discuss the funding to the ERR, and you did not discuss that. You did not debate decreasing the amount of that funding. And so if we can be concerned about $20,000 for four bulletin boards, we can also be very concerned about the $10,000 in increased maintenance fees that Daryl Braithwaite is projecting. That's $10,000 that we wouldn't have to spend, and I'm not even sure if they're in the ERR, by the way. I don't know whether they come out of the general fund or the ERR. But that doesn't decrease my taxes to risk something that I personally love, which is my on-time and very diligent track pickup. I lived in DC for 15 years, and we did not have that there, and moving a couple miles north has made a big improvement in my life, and I appreciate that service as a resident. I think most residents do, and they don't know that they don't appreciate it until they don't have it. I was also dismayed that the Ward Six council member did not fully support funding the position of the Economic Development Manager, despite being reminded that this position typically pays for itself in grants and other economic opportunities that that position identifies, especially in our ward, which has a huge potential to generate income for the city, which could lower all of our taxes, and the ward who is currently being negatively impacted by the Purple Line construction. We will need to transition and adapt that business corridor, and we need the position of Economic Development Manager to help us do that. And finally, I would also like to highlight the lengthy discussion that we had on the Sustainability Manager salary. It also seems the council doesn't reference its own stated priorities here when talking about these cuts and for the budget of the position, as well as the sustainability programming. And I would also like to see the council work more collaboratively with the Acting City Manager and the Director of Public Works to understand the needs and fund those needs. The role of the council is to appoint the city manager and to allow the manager and the department heads that they control to determine what is correct for their city, as stated in City Ordinance 2004-3. So I would like you to reference that before you start adjusting the budget further. Thank you.
Do you have any other general public comments? Do we have any online?
We do. We have Joel Rosenberg, who would be first, and Mary Rooker. They are both on the call. So, Mr. Rosenberg, you're up.
Hello, Council. Thank you for having me again. I spoke on Monday. I'm from Ward One, and I'm here to speak in favor of maintaining the full funding of the Sustainability Department. As I mentioned, and as David Bloxstein mentioned earlier, there's a lot of money that's coming online to help people get off of fossil fuels. And, you know, I'm sensitive to everybody who doesn't want their taxes raised and who want to protect the elderly, et cetera. We're at a critical moment in this fight against climate change. A solution has presented itself, which is essentially to electrify all of our stuff and run it on renewable energy, and it's a 25-year project to get everybody off of fossil fuel. The Inflation Reduction Act, as well as Montgomery County, are making money available for people to get electric appliances, and if they do that, their bills will go down. If people... But in order to make that happen, people have to know about the benefits, and there's also lots of grants and other funding becoming available. And so somebody just mentioned an Economic Development Manager who pays for themselves through grants. I am pretty confident that the Sustainability Manager, if, you know, part of the responsibility is writing grants, et cetera, for all of the money that's available, it will also pay for itself. But on a longer-term basis, if we can stop buying fossil fuels and reduce everybody's bills in the near term, we can also keep all that money local, in Tacoma Park, in Montgomery County, in Maryland, et cetera, and stop sending it to, you know, the gasoline companies and the fossil, you know, the fossil gas companies and all the other places. Just a note on, you know, people talk about living within their means. You could argue that for the last, you know, 100 years, humans have been living on our energy savings, which is the stuff that we dig out of the ground and burn up. And we have an opportunity to live on the income that is provided by the sun every day, and we can use the power from the sun to essentially power our entire economy if we make the decision to get off of fossil fuels. So I see the sustainability position as a key player in this key moment of letting everybody know that this is a transition that is ready to go. The technology is here. Money is becoming available. If everybody buys this stuff, the costs will come down. And so it just seems short-sighted to say at this particular moment that the Sustainability Manager is a role that we can't afford. If anything, you know, we're not going to get more money for that role, but I'm going to be doing my work over the next number of years here to try and help everybody understand what the benefits that are available. It'd be great if there was a paid position, also trying to seek funding to help support this transition. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mary...
Mary Rooker is here.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Cersei, council members, and my fellow citizens who are in the auditorium there. At this past Monday night's hearing, I testified that I was undecided on whether to keep the Sustainability Manager. I could see reasons to keep the post, and yet I also stated that the county has better scale and resources that perhaps we cannot match. After listening to Councilmember Dibala's subsequent comments at the May 1 council hearing, I revised my remarks to reflect my full support for the Sustainability Manager. Ms. Dibala convinced me that we do indeed need to keep the Sustainability Manager. Her arguments were compelling and clear. Funding could be found by shifting to county police, perhaps keeping the police department's trained crisis managers. We could also consider reducing the city manager's salary. As I understand it, the last two city managers were paid more than the county executive and more than comparable city managers in the area. The greatest threat to life on Earth isn't crime. It's the climate emergency. Luckily, we need not choose between the two, as the county can easily tend to crime. And the less time, effort, and money spent on climate mitigation now, the more time, effort, and money it will cost later. I am also concerned about other proposed cuts to related sustainability line items. Please keep the various bike projects and more car-free opportunities. I support funding the Tree Tacoma and Urban Forest Programs and would like to see further improvements. And we also need education on the Safe Grow Ordinance. Citizens can do much as individuals, but we will fail to redress the crisis without government. Just as one small example, I have a bike, but I cannot make the city bike-friendly. I can't make it bikable. Strong involvement of government at all levels is crucial if we are to succeed at making the many drastic lifestyle changes that scientists called for yet again in their March 2023 Final Warning to Humanity. The climate crisis is so serious that replacing an experienced professional with a student is not just penny-wise and pound-foolish. It jeopardizes our future. I urge you to support the full funding. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you. And I think that concludes our general public comments, and we can move on to council comments. Do we have any council comments today? Councilmember Hansap.
All right. I try really hard to stay in my three minutes. There's a lot of comments here that I just want to respond to. This is my first time to be up here, as many people know, and this has been an amazing and interesting process. I'm a deep believer in dialogue, and there's a lot of judgment being made by residents about what it means to see one thing on a reconciliation today and another thing four hours later. Well, if you ask me, that's a darned good thing. You want to see change because evolution means people are talking. And evolution means that we hired elected officials, not hired, we elected officials are talking to our hired staff about their judgment, they're talking to us about what our residents really want, and we're asking them those very tough questions because even though we go till midnight a lot, we don't have enough time up here to ask all those tough, tough questions. So I just want to share with you that I hope that we are better than the rest of America and that there is some trust in these Tacoma Park homegrown officials, that we are really the people that you believe we are, the ethical, caring, compassionate people who are asking tough, tough questions, demanding data, and doing our darned best... doing our darned best in every minute of the day to get it back to you as well as we can. So trust, there's a trust deficit across America, but please believe me when I say that we are doing our level best. I can speak for every single person up here, given the number of hours and minutes of the day that we have been talking and talking and talking. And yeah, we can do better. Next year, I hope we'll all have more time to have these dialogues. But let's be better than the rest of America and have less of a trust deficit in our elected officials. And getting back to some of the line items, and actually, maybe I'll just get to the point of what I plan to do tonight, because I won't have time to respond to all the residents. I'll talk to you afterwards. But I believe that we should trim back. I believe we need to restore our fiscal health. Thus, my suggested cuts to the E R R, I think that helps with the long-term health, short-term health. My cut to a sustainability budget, though minor, is not intended in any way, nor to the tree fund, is not in any way a suggestion of my values in terms of those programs. It's a suggestion of my belief that there are some places where we can trim responsibly and carefully and still achieve our goals as a city. And I'm looking for little trims here and there until we get that just right, and until we have that deep dialogue that we really need, maybe a survey and focus groups and discussions at large about what are the values that we still share in common, and where later might we want to really rejigger some of the things that we have agreed to fund over time. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dybala?
Thank you. Thank you. So, two kinds of things. One, not budget-related. So Saturday, I went to the Maryland Municipal League Board meeting, learned a lot about what other communities do with their budget. It was very interesting. And we are not alone in facing, we are really not alone, in facing the the post-pandemic needing to consider a tax increase. So I just want to put that out there. It also, for the rest of the council here, it's not your grandpa's M M L anymore. I was very impressed with the energy level, with the professionalism, with the new staff, the whole package. So that was the first thing. Second, I wanted to thank the police chief, deputy chief, and staff for coming out, and all the 55 folks in Ward Two who showed up online or in person to talk about police and public safety. And I would add, not a single person mentioned significant cuts to the police budget, which I did think was kind of interesting. So also, thank you to Tacoma Stormwater Solutions. I enjoyed the meeting last night, talking about possible program efforts here in Tacoma. Two more announcements. Thank you, Youth Council, for the forum last week. Yeah, so while we were also making ourselves crazy with the budget book, there's been a lot going on. And speaking of going on, this, tomorrow night, Belford Place Sidewalk Meeting, 7:30 by Zoom. Contact me if you haven't gotten the letter and don't have the Zoom. The other thing I want to say is to thank all those who've come out to comment and all of you who've showed up to talk, and all of those who have written me, and those who have sent me comments or attended different budget meetings. And I want to tell the rest of the council what I'm hearing. So I have since Saturday heard from something like 45 people about the budget and what, plus the people who came to the budget meeting, budget, two budget meetings, plus the police, the public safety folks. But so of the 45 people who have not copied the entire council, what I've heard is that there is a range of opinions on what to cut and what to keep. So I'm not getting, except for two things, I'm not getting a super consistent message. So those of you from Ward Two who have been speaking to me about reductions, I'm not hearing that all of your neighbors agree that reducing the tax rate is the most important thing that we should do right now. I'm hearing a bunch of other solutions. I thought that was was really informative. The two exceptions were, I would say, public safety and sustainability, where most, not all, most residents that contacted me supported those programs. So I just wanted the rest of the council to know what's going on in Ward Two. And I wanted to say one other thing about the budget, if you will bear with me for just one more minute. So what's our goal here? So tonight, we need to make adjustments to the general fund that will affect the tax rate. Okay. But for me, right now, coming out of several years of pandemic, working to keep a flat tax rate, working to not lay people off, to make sure the funds are available to get all of us through COVID, cutting into reserves, yes, we did. So for me, the long-term fiscal health of our city is what ranks highest. And it may not be that keeping a low tax rate is going to be the smartest thing for us to do. So I just want to get that out there. Of course, I want to lower the tax rate. I am very aware of elderly, low-income, and other people in the community who need help. And I have already reached out to state delegate, one of our state delegates, to talk about revising the state rules by which we have to follow to give property tax credits. So we started that work three years ago. We're making another run at it now. And anybody who wants more information, just contact me. I'm going on a bit, so I'll try to race to the finish here. What I, so I don't want to make cuts that are penny-wise and pound-foolish in my judgment. I don't want to lay off staff. I don't want to make it impossible that we can't, that we don't fulfill the five goals we have. And some of the cuts on the table will make it almost impossible to fulfill the goals that this council has set for itself. So what I do want to do, last point, what I do want to do is later tonight, some of you may not be here, to introduce either a budget amendment or a resolution. Still looking for technical guidance here on this one. But to propose, as I've said a couple times, by date certain, that the city council and the city manager will work together on a few of the policies that keep coming up every time we talk about budget, and take the time outside of this budget process to look at vehicle replacement policy, road maintenance policy, equipment replacement policy, facility maintenance reserves, and to look at sources of alternative additional revenue. What I said to the resident earlier today, I thought what I wrote, was that the city staff had not had time to analyze the specific proposal and to that I would be proposing this, so that we make sure that we do it, not just for dumpster fees, but for all of the things that are relevant. So that's it. Thanks for your patience with me tonight, and I look forward to the discussion.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes. First of all, listening to the comments tonight, Monday, in the last couple of weeks, I want to say that you all have been poignant, you've been constructive, and many of you are worried. And I, we are listening to that. As I see it, we have basically two competing goals here, the affordability and our need or desire for desired services and programs, and a balance is needed between them. I see a trade-off. We have eroding affordability options for many current residents, and as well as those that would like to come here. And I see an increasingly bifurcated city. And we have viable programs and services that continue to grow in cost and number, but valuable all the same. So we're at a decision point, I think, with regard to both our fiscal and demographic trajectories. I think it's time for a course correction. What little I can do with my vote, that's what I'm going to try and do, a course correction through balance and values. Couple of things that I'd like to do as a part of that. Keep proven programs, programming services, but increase program efficiencies and effectiveness. Reduce spending and save more as a business norm. Protect the residents most affected by high taxes. To do this, I think we ought to reach a point that would be reducing our general fund expenditures by at least $720,000, which is our constant yield plus inflation. I'd also like to maintain and build up our reserves as much as is practical. That's what I'd like to do tonight. Looking forward, we need to go beyond tonight and address longer structural issues, which Cindy talked about to some degree. We need to improve and lengthen our truncated budget review process. It's horrendous. It's, we're not efficient, effective. We're doing the best we can. I'm new to this game, but we can do better. We need to change our scheduling for doing our budget. We need to review and update operational policies, as Cindy said. We need to develop and monitor performance measures. Metrics for all programs. We can't cut programs if we don't know whether they've met their targets. We don't count that kind of stuff now. We need to do that next year. We need to review our strategies to revise property tax credit programs, again, as Cindy said. And I think we need to review a possible transition of some programs or services to Montgomery County. We've got more than our share of things to do tonight, but the bigger lift is over the long term to, like I said, to address the structural issues that are plaguing our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Small?
I appreciate the opportunity, and I will try to comport myself within a three-minute time limit, but I'm going to ask with the same courtesy that Councilwoman Dybala got. Thank you. I'd like to begin by saying that I feel no obligation to pretend like I don't know things. And as such, I am under no illusion that any number of the processes or programs that we use in the town or city or town of Tacoma Park are efficient in current design. And that's fine. But I think it's important that when we talk about these things, that we are able to recognize that some level of scrutiny and discourse is necessary for those things. Getting in the position required to be able to have these conversations with people with some sort of import is also important. And so I appreciate the people that decided to either get elected or stay elected, particularly given the circumstances that we're facing this particular council. It's not lost on me who didn't stay. And it's really sort of odd to me. Like, there's two things that come up to me all the time, particularly when I talk about my interest in politics. And one of them is my American Lit class. And the reason for that is, is that as a gifted and talented kid who was completely alienated from both sides of any sort of divide, it was cool to have the books. And so one of the things that's really frustrating is the presupposition that someone would besmirch that as a premise, or in any of the degrees, you just come in and say things that are patently illegal and act like you did something. But I guess what I'd like to say at this point, I have a particular thing to say, and it is from self-reliance, and it is, "If an angry bigot assumes the bountiful cause of abolition and comes to me with his last news from Barbados, why should I not say to him, 'Go love thy infant, love thy woodchopper, be good-natured and modest, have that grace, and never varnish your hard, uncharitable ambition with the incredible tenderness for black folk a thousand miles off.' Thy love afar is spite at home. Rough and graceless would be such greeting, but truth is handsomer than the affectation of love. Your goodness must have some edge to it, else it is none. The doctrine of hatred must be preached at the counteraction of the doctrine of love when that love pulls and whines." I say that to say this. It's clear to me that there are any number of actual, hard-on-the-ground, normal political science things at issue here, whether it be the effectiveness of labor organizing or the desire of baby boomers to continue to participate at a level that is alienating to younger people, or the natural transitions of a society that used to presuppose that we would be shipping people into homes at this point, and the development of human potential. And I think all those things need to be reconciled together. And I don't think it is fair for anyone to assume that anyone doesn't have those things at interest. And I think it is particularly of import to imply that the policies, like the Federal Housing Administration, or the policies of the county, or anyone who lives in an area that previously had a restrictive covenant, be acknowledged as a component part of the entitlement that some people seem to have about what is important about a budget. Additionally, it is really important to know that your staff is doing the things that you want them to do. And if we ask questions and we don't get answers, and you ask questions and you don't get answers, then nobody knows. And I really do find it humorous. It's as if there is not only the ghost of Emerson in this place, but everyone is an aristocrat with no clothes on, like the emperor with no clothes. Because people come in here and say things as if we don't know who you are, or where you live, or what priorities you seem to espouse. So let's be clear. There is no person up here who is not taking this oath seriously. There is no person up here, besides myself, who is in a voting position, who has worked in a municipal government. And there is also no person in this room who should not also be concerned about the county's extreme tax increase, or the really, really profound inability of the county to either police the areas that are immediately adjacent to us, or Prince George's County to police those areas. And as such, I think it is entirely important to include that I would love to see a reasonable rate increase for people who are under the gun and who are maybe underemployed or unfairly adjusted. But in order to do so, we need to have an acknowledged and fair playing field, because everybody is having the same difficulties. And it's unreasonable and offensive to everyone who doesn't have the time to come in here and say fatuous things, or cogent, and really profound and important things. And so I don't want to make, I don't want it to be that I'm not differentiating between the two. But there are people who still live here and who lived here for a long time, who don't get home until 7:30. We have an innumerable number of new children in my neighborhood, and those people don't have time to come to these meetings. And if you are to assume that you care about this place as much as I do, then you're also thinking about the elderly people who live in your community. Because the ones that live in my community, nobody ever listened to. A lot of them don't speak English. And when I walk around and I talk to them, they're thankful that I'm up here asking these kinds of questions. So thank you.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would think this is probably a good time for any of you to take a break. If you're expecting eloquent prose from me, it's not going to happen. I, I'm going to deviate tonight from the budget for a few minutes, just to talk about a couple other issues. First one is something that's very concerning to me, and that is we have, I don't know, I don't know if it was quite about a half dozen years ago, the city council worked with the county to bring in some raised gardens for the elderly and for the elderly and disabled residents of the Franklin Apartments here along Maple Avenue. And there was an arrangement for the county to supply water periodically to make sure the gardens had sufficient water supply. And that plan kind of fell off before halfway through the first year because they found out it was a lot of work. But since that time, the residents of the Franklin Apartment who do their gardens there, grow many vegetables, have been carrying the water by the bucket load down from the building, across the parking lot, down to water their plants. And it's been very successful. They've been very well-used and, and very well-appreciated by the residents there. And there's been a lottery to decide who gets to, who gets to have a garden for the summer. I was very concerned to hear that they have received, the apartment building has received, Montgomery Housing Partnership noticed a concern from the city that there had been a complaint about the gardens down there and that they've been asked to either move the gardens or remove them. And I'm not going to go into a lot more tonight other than just ask the city manager if we could maybe schedule a time to sit down and talk about that and see if there isn't a different approach. The Montgomery Housing Partnership has already removed, emptied five of the containers. There is no other location on their property where they can put these without the residents having to walk up the hill to get to them. And they're already carrying water, which is a great hardship on the individuals who do gardening. Anyways, I would hope that we could maybe discuss this and see if there is some leniency that we could give, whether this is really adhering to the policy that the council has set. And, you know, somebody told me that, that maybe there's a concern about rats. I don't think rats really like living plants or jump into raised containers to get to the plants. I know there's trash bins the other side of the fence, which I think my own experience is rats kind of like trash bins, especially if they're not well-maintained and kept in an orderly fashion. But even if it, even if it is rats and people feel it is, the gardens, you know, there's bait traps. That's all that a apartment manager has to do to, to address rat problems in an apartment building, put bait traps around the, around the trash cans, not have to move them or remove them. So anyways, enough said. I, just expressing my frustration at this point, but I'd like to have an opportunity to meet with the city manager and discuss, see if we can't find some leniency for this.
Absolutely. We're welcome to conversation, Councilman.
I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to mention tonight, again, going back in history a little, when I first became involved in the community, one of the first committees I was on was the Year 2000 Committee. Remember how we, you know, the world was going to end at the year 2000? But it turns out it didn't. But I attribute that to because we had a Year 2000 Committee, and so we were able to keep us from ending. But one of the concerns that we had at that time was not just with the, the change in the date and the effect on computers, but also some of the, some of the people raised a concern about the trains coming right along the border of Tacoma Park and the fact that right during that same period of time, we learned that, that the federal government was transporting some nuclear material, nuclear waste and carrying it from, you know, power plants across the country and in fact, coming right by the border of Tacoma Park. And so we were concerned about the potential of a disaster if there was a train wreck. More recently, I think we've all seen a number of train wrecks around the country and one in East Palestine in Ohio, where there was a serious, serious problems with the wreck. And so I'm not suggesting that we expand the budget to, to have a railroad commission here in Tacoma Park, but I would suggest that the council support Senate Bill S. 576 that the Senate is taking up now to strengthen the small cities' safety from train, train transportation. Thank you.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Taxes aren't simple in a community like ours. We have high aspirations for environmental stewardship and supporting vulnerable people in our community. We offer rent stabilization, and rent stabilization keeps the values of rental properties somewhat lower than they would be, and it decreases the taxes that we receive from those properties and passes on the responsibility to absorb some of those costs outside of what the naturally, the market would naturally put on those, those multifamily units. We, as a community, shoulder the responsibility of paying those higher taxes in order to keep rents more affordable. I have heard many suggestions from residents about cuts that we could make. A lot of those recommendations don't look at the full picture. I agree that we should delay many of the purchases from the equipment reserve, and I'll be supporting delaying a lot of those purchases, but that will not lower our proposed tax rate. I've also heard many suggestions that have to do with how we're planning on spending ARPA funds, but once again, that would not affect the tax rate. I do not feel that anyone here is my enemy or anybody here has bad or even wild intentions. The city manager and the city staff take city aspirations, both those of the council and of our residents, and propose budgets to fit those needs. I can tell that the city residents are very invested in the taxes that they pay and the services that they fund that make us a great place to live. When we are on the other side of this budget, I hope that residents will acknowledge that even if we don't get to the tax rate where they would like it to be, whether it be higher or whether it be lower than what they wanted, I hope that they can still feel like they've been heard.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulcher. So you have a lot going on, right? So I'm going to start this evening first by thanking all of the residents that have come out and provided comments, your emails, your calls. I've gotten calls about the budget as well as coming into these, these meetings over the last few weeks. Your feedback has been really, really helpful. It has helped to spark innovative thinking amongst members of the council, but it also has helped us to better understand that we have to do more outside of the budget cycle to really start to foster some of the necessary conversations that need to happen in order for us to streamline the ideals and priorities and where we want to prioritize as a community to ensure that those priorities are ultimately reflected in the city council's priorities as well as what is budgeted for. You've heard colleagues say, hey, some people have, you've heard the, the, the ideas that have come through around the sustainability budget versus keeping the sustainability budget versus economic development and reducing. So it is really clear that as a community, we aspire high. And I think one of the challenges with dealing with the budget is where aspiration meets reality in terms of what people are willing to pay, in terms of what our staff can feasibly do, in terms of what our staff reasonably wages that are fair and just, that also is an ideal or is a priority that we should prioritize as a community to ensure that our staff are being fairly compensated and that they are provided with the necessary resources that they need to do the jobs that we demand that they do well. So it's really critical. And I hear this, this process has been really, really, really fast, and it should not be. And I'm committed to making sure that we're starting to think through and, and act on ways to revamp the way in which we do budgeting, to allow more time for these conversations, to allow more time for our staff to, to develop answers to questions that you have. One thing that we've seen through this process is as you receive more information, as you're able to share more information, as you're able to have conversations with people whose views may differ from yours, your thoughts may change, your opinions may shift. You may learn more about why certain things are important. And it ultimately, at the end of the day, will result in more than just how much it impacts your tax rate, right? You may make some decisions around what you value as a person and what you need in a community. So definitely committed to that. I will save for my, my, my final discussion about my thoughts on the budget, I guess when we get a little further in. But I am committed to ensuring the long-term fiscal health of the city. And that may mean short-term pain. It may mean that we may have to experience a slight increase in our taxes to ensure the long-term viability of our community. It may mean investing in positions that are critically important to establishing the necessary foundation that we need as a community to gain traction in terms of diversifying and improving our tax base. It may mean making sure that our staff are equipped to have some of these conversations, to do the research necessary to identify new revenues. But that means that we got to pay for it, right? And so that's, that's where I really, and we need more money in our reserves. I, I want the money in our reserves. We can't keep paying Peter and Robin Paul at the same time thinking we're going to get somewhere different. We're not. So we either have to identify what priorities or what activities as a community we're willing to forego and do it in a way that is inclusive and not just based on those folks that are able to show up here on a Monday and a Wednesday night. And that we're able to also identify in a strategic way paths forward in terms of really diversifying the revenue streams of our community. So I think that those are just some of the things that I hold dear and I hope, I know that this process has been painful. I apologize to my new colleagues. I mean, this has been brutal. Yes, and staff. I, I, my goodness, thank you all so much. Because this is, this has been a pretty brutal process. But I am so grateful for the collaboration across the dais and all of my colleagues that have had conversations and we've been working together to really, in a collegial way, to identify places of compromise. And I am so grateful for our city staff that have been responding to the non-stop questions that we have been asking to get into the weeds so that we can better inform or develop this budget from an informed place. So I do want to thank everyone for that. And so I will follow my colleagues' lead in being long-winded this evening. So just want to remind folks a few things that have happened since the, since the last meeting on Wednesday. Last night, the Montgomery College had their facilities master plan kickoff meeting, and it, it went really well. And they provided a lot of, a lot of information around the plans. I think one thing that's important to keep in mind is that there was a lot of activity that's anticipated in Gaithersburg, Rockville. So, but there was definitely mention around East County and the Tacoma Park campus. So I want to thank the Montgomery College staff and the LINK staff for, for facilitating that meeting. Had a fantastic time enjoying the pancake supper, Troop 33. It was amazing. I've, I've never felt, I mean, they turned the place into such a fancy, fancy shop. We had Boy Scouts that were taking our orders and showing us to our seats. I mean, if you haven't gone to the pancake supper, you should. I mean, it's the, you, they would put a Michelin star restaurant to shame at the service level that you receive. So I do want to thank the Troop 33 and all of the, all of the, the leaders of the Boy Scouts for the wonderful event on Sunday. Also want to thank the, our youth council for the forum. I unfortunately had to travel out of town for a family event, so I missed it, and I hate that I did. But I am so grateful for the youth council to, to the, putting on the event. Want to remind folks about naming the EV Street Sweeper. So that contest is going until May the 19th. And last, but definitely not least, because it is one of my favorite events, on May the 6th is the Crossroads Music and Food Festival on Ann Street. There, there's lots of food, there are lots of bands, there's beer. So it is a really fun time. And want to encourage people to come out to Ann Street on May 6th. And with that, I will turn things over to our acting deputy city manager for any city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening, residents of the city. Tomorrow on May 4th, beginning at 6:00 PM is the Montgomery College Facilities Master Plan. This is specifically focused on the Silver Spring Campus. This is a high-level document that, or high-level discussion that will review the, the conditions of the existing facilities, future facility needs based on future enrollment, academic programs, services, and operations of the college. The meeting will be held on Zoom, and you can find the link in the city manager's comments, which will be posted tomorrow morning. Also on May 6th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at the Laurel Avenue Streetery is the Children's Business Fair. Please join us at this event to support youth entrepreneurship. On May 10th, beginning at 7:00 PM, is the Minor Master Plan Montgomery County Historic Preservation Commission hearing. This is the public hearing and work session for the evaluation of the Hefner Park Community Center at 42 Oswego Avenue, the Sligo Seventh Day Adventist Church at 77 Carroll Avenue, and the Crestview at 7625 Carroll Avenue. This hearing will occur at the Montgomery County Planning Department, 2425 Reedie Avenue, second floor, Wheaton, Maryland. You must sign up online to testify. And again, that link will be available in the city manager's comments, which will be posted tomorrow morning. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so. Sorry, my computer just went a little dead, which I don't need right now. All right, so next on the agenda, we are going to get into budget reconciliation. Okay, so I'm just asking for folks to bear with me for a quick second. Yeah, let's, so let's give folks a quick five-minute break so that we can roll up our sleeves and knock this out. All right, we'll reconvene at nine o'clock.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, let's reconvene. Okay, so now we're gonna tackle reconciliation. I'm gonna just give folks the rules, all right? So, um, we've, everyone should have a hard copy of the reconciliation list that you are currently seeing on the screen. Uh, Deputy, uh, Director Braithwaite and Director Chung will be at the helm, keeping track of where, where we're, where we are. Couple of things that I just want to, um, make sure that folks understand. Um, I've heard folks say things like, um, we have over a million dollars in savings showing right now. However, that is not factually correct because we have a lot of things that are in duplicate and then sometimes triple it, triple it, waiting on us to decide on what is the approach that we want to take on the item. So, um, I am going to skip around a little bit in the reconciliation list, okay? And that is so that for the low hanging fruit, and we may be able to make some quick and easy decisions, um, we can take care of those kind of first. And for those items where we have multiple options and we ultimately have to decide, we're trying to group items together so that we can talk about those items collectively, okay? So, um, the goal, as we talk through an issue, I am going to ask, in some cases, for a hand vote. That just means, all those in favor of moving all of the, um, uh, grant match programs from HCD to ARPA, raise your hand. I count, make sure I have enough? We haven't started yet officially. That then would mean that that gives Director Chung and Director Braithwaite the, the green light to say, yes, these are actual cost savings that we can keep in our table that will address our, uh, tax rate because it's through the general fund, and they will move items that we are asking to be in the ARPA to the, make sure those items stay in the ARPA section. Another example is the sustainability manager position. We have like five different options for that, right? So in that case, what I will do, or in cases like that, I may open the floor to see if anyone wants to take back an option that they had proposed, or if someone would like to make a recommendation for an alternative that maybe was new. You figured as much, Tim?
Yep, I was thinking about it.
It's a good procedure, that's right.
That maybe, just to make sure, because there was a lot of information that was shared and there were a lot of conversations that were had, and if there was some sort of consensus and/or alternative option based on the different options that we have, I want to make sure that we can capture it so that we can do a vote, okay? All right.
Question?
Yes.
Uh, two questions. One is, uh, I'm not understanding, what's the difference between the raising a hand versus saying aye? I mean, it's just, is that faster? Is it, or how, is it more or less formal? I'm not sure what the distinction.
You can see the four easier. Did you see all four?
Yep, it's just, it's just unless we need to.
It doesn't finalize that item, or it does finalize that item if you raise your hand? I mean, if you got four out of the seven.
It, yes, so if we, once we have.
It is final.
The thing is, once we have, um, four votes to move, especially if there are things that are contradicting one another, if we don't have enough votes for one option, then we, we go with the other, if that makes sense.
Oh, okay. Um, and then secondarily, uh, in the process of a discuss, I mean, in- introducing these three items that are in this. Questions, can I ask a question? Can we, I wanna, I mean, are we, is there no discussion or is there a discussion permitted? What kind of discussion?
I am asking for there to be, unless there is an issue that has so many options that warrants a discussion, I would prefer, when we have a limited number of options, for us to not have to go into detailed discussions about them because we've talked about them a lot.
But if we haven't talked about it, then it's okay to bring up questions, okay?
Okay. I believe we have everything on the list. Fingers crossed. I know there were some last minute items, but I also saw a lot of, um, information that our staff brought forward, um, clarifying a few things, okay? So, let's, let's jump in. I'm gonna start with low hanging fruit so people can feel comfortable and then we'll get to the increasingly harder stuff, okay? All right, let's start with, uh, one item. Um, we have, in the capital improvement, um, budget, um, there was a proposal to decrease the general fund, CIP, for the, uh, the Metro Branch Trail City Match, HCD, twelve thousand dollars. And then moving it to ARPA. We have the ARPA, I'm sorry, the Maple Ave Connectivity Project City Match, twenty percent, HCD. That was fifty thousand dollars, um, for our director, that's, uh, lines fifty-five and line sub, um, fifty-seven. And then there was also line fifty-eight, the New Hampshire Ave City Match for HCD at sixty-one thousand two hundred dollars. What was discussed was to move those three items to the ARPA line. I'm gonna do this in a, in a bulk. Councilmember Gibson.
Can I, I have a question, just in terms of, uh, we know, we'll decide later whether it's, it can stay in the ARPA fund or not? In other words, i- if, if, uh, you know, we can only put so much in the ARPA fund or it pushes something else out, it, the, I'm just wondering what the ramifications of moving something into ARPA? Do we have a later discussion about ARPA?
Sure. So, the, um, issue with ARPA is that there is a finite number of dollars in our ARPA fund. However, um, there are, then we were informed that there are some places of activities that were funded under ARPA that were not, uh, that have not been implemented yet. However, it's also important to keep in mind that there were other activities that were in the budget and were listed under ARPA. But there are different categories that members of council had already proposed to reduce those amounts of ARPA funds, which means it could be the case, once we're done with reconciliation, that what we may take from, say, sidewalks in ARPA may balance what, what we may propose in terms of the activities that we want to move from the general fund to ARPA. But we won't know for sure until we figure out what, um, what we ultimately want to do in terms of the plethora of items that have been proposed regarding street rehab, re- street rehab adjustments, new sidewalks, traffic calming, ADA and the like, because all of those items were in the budget and were funded under ARPA. And, and so if we take that money out, that means there's a pot. Okay? All right, so, we're gonna do our first vote, y'all ready? All right. And just as a reminder, the, um, the match funds, keep in mind, we're talking about funds that are being matched for grants, right? All right, so, by show of hands, how many councilmembers are okay with us or, uh, vote in favor of moving the following items to the ARPA fund? Metro Branch Trails, uh, City Match, the Maple Ave Connectivity Project City Match, Grant Match, and the New Hampshire Avenue City, um, Grant Match, all right? Okay, so it moves.
Easy.
That, see, that wasn't painful. It was not painful at all. All right, so now?
Did you raise your hand?
I did. I did raise my hand. Okay, so now?
Where do we look to see the running total?
Somebody keep in score?
Yes, so I, um.
The running total is not really gonna show up because we have all the multiple items until we go through the process.
Yep, that's correct. Um, so the, I have a, also a running, um, final list. Um, this particular item did not change our tax rate in any, or our total in any way because it was already showing as an item in the capital improvement as well as an item that is in ARPA. So, based on what we have right now, that doesn't change anything. When we start talk, yep. We're talking about what, the action we just took.
Those were billed to the general fund.
They were billed to the general fund, but we're already showing, if we scrolled up in our spreadsheet, we're already showing that cost savings here. So those items were already shown as a deduction because we moved them into the ARPA.
Got it, all right.
Got it?
I didn't, I didn't get the reason that way.
Yep.
So we could've, so that could've been changed back?
Yes.
Theoretically.
Theoretically.
But since it's on there, we're going to keep it the way that it is.
Correct, because we could have said we didn't want it to move to ARPA, we just wanted to get rid of it, and therefore it would've shown as a decrease, but it wouldn't have shown in ARPA.
Yes, and I would just like to say about that, I'm, I'm, I'm particularly comfortable with that because we do have undedicated ARPA funds in addition to whatever changes we're going to make. And, uh, this is a permissible spend for ARPA dollars and there's, you know, something to show for it. And it also matches monies, and I believe in that.
Okay, great. All right. So, let's get ready. Let's get ready to, uh, to address, um, a next item. All right, so, let's talk about, we have another move item. So, there was a proposal to move, um, the mobile computers for the police and the field radio equipment for the police department. The mobile computers for the police is showing as twenty-five thousand dollars. And the field radio equipment police is showing as thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, the recommendation was to move those line items to the, um, to the speed camera fund. Okay? Just to remind folks, that was something that we had requested to do.
Um, if I may? Are those the same items that were discussed as the, the one and only items that were going, that we didn't know about previously that we, that could go to the speed camera fund? They could utilize, those are the ones that Dibala was just speaking of the other? Okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying. I thought they were, but just wanted to make sure.
Yep, nope, that's right. So, all those in favor? Of moving the, um, uh, mobile computers for the police and the field radio equipment for the police to the, um, um, gosh, what is it called?
Speed Camera Fund.
Speed Camera Fund, thank you so much. Um, Councilmember Simmons. All right, so, looks like, I thought I caught hands and looked like everyone was in favor of that. Okay, awesome. All right, y'all, we are getting there. Okay, so, now, um, we're going to get to things that are a little bit more challenging. All right. So, let's talk about, we have two items for the Neighborhood Commercial Center Program Rebate, that's line sixty-three.
Line sixty-three and sixty-five. Um, down at the bottom of Capital Improvement, which is orange.
I don't understand, like, what is that?
The, um, Neighborhood Commercial Center, uh, uh. Yep. They're showing, okay, so, um, let's take a quick, uh, ask of Director Hubings. Um, so, and I don't know if we have HCD staff here, um, but there were two items that are on the list. One, item sixty-three, which is the Neighborhood Commercial Center Program Rebate, HCD. Um, Councilmember Small proposed, it was fifty-seven for fifty-seven. And then there was a proposal of a decrease of the Neighborhood, um, Commercial Center Improvement in the CIP. And Councilmember Dibala, um, proposed to move that item to the ARPA. So can we confirm that these are indeed the same items?
Those are the same items, and we have, uh, Director Keller online if we need a brief description of what those, uh, dollars of program for.
Yes, Ira, it would be great to have a refresher.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Ira Keller, Acting HCD Director. Uh, just real briefly, these funds are intended for, um, capital investments for businesses and commercial centers throughout the city. Uh, currently, these funds, the hundred thousand dollars that was allotted in fiscal year twenty-three are being used for our business investment grant, which is, uh, matching one-to-one grant for, uh, capital fit-out expenditures for businesses that are either looking to, uh, locate for the first time or, uh, expand in a meaningful way in the city. So either additional square footage, additional services, additional employees, so on. Um, we have, uh, out of the hundred thousand for FY twenty-three, we've allotted, uh, either expended or allotted about sixty thousand of that so far. So the sixty thousand would allow us to kind of refresh that pot, um, and continue making, um, making those direct business, uh, investments, grant investments.
And so, Ira, just as a quick, I'm sorry, uh, Director Keller, I gotta get used to that. Um, the, uh, uh, this item was originally funded last year as part of the ARPA list of projects, correct?
Sure, so without, um, getting into too much detail, this item has historically been a CIP request. Um, last year, it was also moved into ARPA. Um, I think that's certainly, um, uh, allowable, and we used ARPA funds last year. Uh, the, the reason it was CIP request this year was to kind of just move back into, um, CIPs. We had traditionally made this request from there.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah. Very, very briefly, two questions. Um, for ARPA, it was counted as a general revenue loss under the ten million or it was counted as the targeted programs for, um, for the?
COVID affected.
COVID affected, thank you. I'm thinking it was the latter, but I'd like to confirm if you know, if not, I'll just ask my second question.
Sure, I'm not entirely sure. I, I guess what I'll say is it was called out as a specific line item, Neighborhood Commercial Center improvements in the FY twenty-three ARPA funds. So, um, I, I don't know if that answers the, the question.
At the time that, as businesses were recovering, that this was clearly a use of ARPA that fell under that second category, the, the COVID impacted category.
I, I would imagine so, and similar to the small business grants that we also, you know, were able to award through ARPA under that designation.
And my, so this is in addition to the small business grants?
Correct, so the small business grants were intended to be a one-time program. We had three hundred thousand dollars. We spent, I believe, all except thirty-six thousand dollars, uh, of, of those funds already. And, and there's no intention to, to ask for more of those, uh, small business support funds.
Okay, and then my second question is, if I recall, this is already less than what Neighborhood Commercial Center program monies were in the past.
Uh, ideally, we'd, uh, traditionally, I believe, ask for about a hundred thousand dollars each year, correct?
Okay, and I lied, third question?
Last question.
Program, program results, I think you have sent them to us, but just remind me?
Yes, we, we've sent them out, I believe. Um, I don't have the numbers directly from them, but I believe we've made eight grant awards for, uh, again, around a little over sixty thousand dollars. Uh, currently, about, uh, three, I think we just paid out a third this week, uh, and the other five are encumbered and in progress.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now I'm warning y'all, I'm trying to get us out of here before the sun rises.
Chip provides clarity, Mayor, um, this was considered neighborhood community, I'm sorry, it's neighborhood community connectors. Um, so the, the, the program that we're talking about was not included as a, uh, eligible project, so it did count towards revenue loss, it looks like.
Okay, all right, so under revenue loss, what important to know, thank you. All right. Councilmember Small?
Is this program separate from the activities and funding for the business improvement districts?
Uh, thanks for the question, correct. This is our only, currently our only direct funding to business program. So this money goes in grant awards directly to, uh, the business owners themselves.
And with regard to this spending, these are, um, what I, I guess in the parlance would be considered micro grants to startup costs or, um, increased costs? And short-term exogenous advantage opportunity?
Sure, so these are, uh, small grants, correct? Maximum of ten thousand dollars, they are one-to-one matches, um, with the business side investment, uh, and they must go towards, uh, what we term capital fit-out expenses. So those are capital equipment or, um, uh, investment expenses directly related to business, uh, expansion metrics.
And all of these businesses have, uh, survived and it, uh, throughout the year post-award?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Gibson?
Just a, uh, question, because, um, you were, you were there, you used the word grants and then you just said it was a match, so these are matching grants, is that what you're?
That's correct, so again, to, to, uh, to, to receive the maximum ten thousand dollar grant award, the total project cost would have to be at least twenty thousand dollars. Um, and these are reimbursable grants, so, um, uh, the, um.
The business, the business, correct. Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to confirm. Sometimes the word grants doesn't sound like it would be necessary.
Yeah, and I thought you were talking about whether or not this was match money for the grant. So no, 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 yeah, that was a good, that's really helpful. Okay, so.
One more time.
Uh, it looked, it looks like there's maybe a labeling error. Um, so I am now unsure whether or not that program is included as eligible costs or revenue loss. So we will have to get back to you.
Okay. The, the, um, neighborhood? Mm-hmm, was the top of, is this trying to figure out whether or not it was used as like revenue loss monies under ARPA or some other? No. Yep. Yeah, no, that's, uh, and so just want to make sure, because I'm glad we're having this discussion. So, it, it has become clear that we're talking about the same program. The question before council, do we eliminate it altogether from the budget? Or do we move it into ARPA funding? Okay, so I'm gonna pause really quickly to see if anyone wants to, I believe it's Councilmember Small or Councilmember Dibala, do either of you want to modify your item before we move forward to vote?
I'm comfortable with my item moving to ARPA if it is ARPA eligible. Um, if it is not ARPA eligible, then I would be comfortable withholding off on said spending.
And I just want to confirm again that this item was funded in, using ARPA funds in twenty-three, is that right?
Yes, so it's, it's, in either case, it's eligible for ARPA. It, the question is into what category it falls? So is it a, a, a revenue loss or is it a eligible program? And I don't have that answer before us. But it will, those dollars do qualify as, as ARPA.
So it's an account, like, not, for the purposes of this exercise, it's, it's an accounting distinction as to where you put it?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember Small, given that clarification, um, do you, would you like us to vote on your first item or would you like to withdraw it?
I would rather it go to ARPA.
Okay, perfect. So I'm gonna ask, um, Director Chung and Director Braithwaite to withdraw the duplicate item in line sixty-three? And then the council will proceed. Now, I just want to pause really quickly. You all can see that that is something that changed our number at the bottom. So now we're at nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, um, seventy-three bucks, right? In terms of where we are.
And I just wanted, I wanted to say about that, it's, it is not as if I am, uh, resistant to the concept of microloans or any other thing. Um, but it is, uh, the kind of spending that I would think we would associate with, uh, uh, getting back on one's feet and then hoping for the best.
All right, so now we're gonna vote on item number sixty-five. Um, decreasing, uh, uh, the, um, Neighborhood Commercial Center Improvement CIP item from the general fund expenditures line to the ARPA line. All those in favor, please say, oh, got all of the hands, it's unanimous? All right, so that is one that we are now done with addressing. All right, so now I'm tackling the rest of CIP if I can. Okay, so, now we have, uh, bike improvement, which I think was also another item similar to, just trying to confirm my lines. All right. Okay, so bike improvement, going anywhere else? Public Works, HCD, okay, yes. So the, um, it sound, it looks like, based on the list, the, um, bike improvement work of forty thousand dollars, see, that we have a recommendation from, um, Councilmember Foulter, Small and Hansak to move that, uh, forty thousand dollars from the general fund, CIP, to the ARPA fund. Okay? Councilmember Hansak?
I have a question, um, I am wondering if, uh, if, if we are able to alter those amounts once we get to the ARPA budget? I presume the answer is yes, I just want to double check. Like, so we could go from forty to, and I'm, I'm not talking about leaving money in the general fund, I'm talking about, let's say, an overall reduction later.
I, I would, I mean, although the goal is to start talking about the ARPA fund, um, soon after we kind of close out the budget, one of the things I would caution us about is that the staff have, for the most part, they have plans in place, um, that they were budgeting for this forty thousand dollars. So we would need to make sure that we're expediting, especially if the idea is to cut those monies to them because if we're telling them they're gonna get the forty thousand, but they're gonna get it through ARPA, they're planning for that. Um, and then if we turn around and cut it later, that could be, that could be problematic.
Can I share briefly? I'll try briefly. Uh, based on the fifty-seven thousand that we just transferred, it changed my calculations. I didn't think I was gonna be able to get to a full two cent decrease on the tax rate. I just, if I jigger with five thousand here and five thousand there, I just got myself to my vote line items to a two, like, to a one cent tax increase instead of a two cent. Uh, and it's just making me rethink how much I, I think we might want to put into that one, but it would depend on how much. That we, there are also plans in the capital improvement budget of one point one million that's been put into ARPA. So, whatever we're putting now, I think, you know, it just kind of depends on where those funds go. Anyway, I, I, I don't know if I'm, yeah, I was trying to get to two cents and I didn't think I was getting that close, but I just got that close, so, uh, it can hold off, I, I, I guess I'll just, I'll just vote yes and then we can discuss it later, I guess.
So, so, so let's do this. Let's do this. Let's do this, let's vote on this particular item, the items that are in the general fund. And then we will move to the votes that we need to have on the ARPA. If there are items that we have voted in favor of moving to ARPA that you would like to modify, we will do it at that time. But I want to be clear, we are not opening the door right now for all things ARPA. We are only talking about the items that are on our table related to ARPA. So once we get through the discussion. So once we get through the discussions around like street rehab, for example. Traffic calming and the like, you may have a better understanding of where those numbers are. And whether or not there's, there's no net loss to our ARPA dollars. And what that may mean in terms of the overall tax rate as well. Okay? Alright, so with that, so I can get us through the general fund.
I compliment you on your effort so far, by the way.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Alright, so. Item on the table right now. Is uh, the. Try not to lose my space, alright. Thank you so much, we're on fifty-three, okay? All those in favor of moving the bike improvement CIP. Of forty thousand dollars to the ARPA fund, raise your hand. Alright, awesome, so that's item that's done too. Okay. We're, we're almost done with CIP until we get to sidewalks and that's gonna take a while, alright, so. Now, I want to make sure, public space. Management plan. Okay. Alright, so there is a. Just trying to make sure that I don't see another public space management plan. Oh, yeah, 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 nope, we moved it, yep, okay, alright, so the next item. And again, I recognize that we're gonna be in this place, where we're gonna have to do the math on the, on the items that we're moving to ARPA. Uh, the next item is the public space management plan. Um, it looks like there were at one point two items on the table, because I think they got combined in the same list. And so I want to make sure that things are being accurately discussed. I know I um. Had put this on the, the chopping block. For this fiscal year, not moving it to ARPA. Um, the reason for me was not that I don't want us to have monies to go towards um, the public space. Management plan implementation um, at large or going forward, I support that and would definitely vote in favor for it um, in the next budget. My concern was that we still are having to deal with getting uh, presentations on the actual final results of the plan. The council will need to make um, and work with staff to make some decisions around which recommendations, which areas we want to move in first. And I am just nervous that it may not be the case that we will actually be in a place to implement a recommendation from that plan. This fiscal, this upcoming fiscal year, so that was my rationale for saying let's forego the monies. This year. Um, but the expectation is that we would fund it in future years. Um, but I think council member um, Hansak, and I don't want to speak for council member Hansak or council member Dibala. But it seems like there was an alternative that was proposed as well. To move that item into ARPA.
Can I speak to your? Point first?
Yeah, sure, count, uh, gosh, I'm losing, council member Small, you're first.
Um, thank you, and I, I, I'd like to speak to the mayor's point here only insofar as. Um. I am. Comfortable with the need to do better management of public spaces in uh, Tacoma Park, in particular the fact that there are only really two flat. Places for people to congregate and play things, um, and those places are overrun and overused. Um, but that being said, at least. Two of them, we have cooperative agreements with other organizations. Um, being school district and otherwise, and I'd like to make sure that we had the proper levels of accountability back and forth. On those public spaces, if that's what we were talking about, if we're talking about specifically um, potentially adding to public spaces to congregate. Or managing um, wild areas. That seems like a different thing, and so I just wanted to make sure that we had a specific. Enunciation of where we think we are on the public space plan.
Yeah, um, so uh, 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 Director Kara Keller, are you still there?
I'm here, yes.
Alright, can you give, can you give us a, a quick rundown of what the public space? Um, plan um, is and uh, next steps for it?
First, uh, as you pointed out, um, uh, madam mayor, we've been, you know, involved in. Uh, a pretty long process here of completing this public space management plan, and we are hoping to um. Present it to you and the rest of council shortly, um, this plan takes a look uh, at not just kind of an inventory. Of our publicly owned spaces in the city, but really takes an eye towards how we can uh, in a more equitable way. Plan the maintenance, activation, um, use of those existing public spaces as well as um. Kind of future, uh, excuse me, acquisition or um, planning around future public spaces, so it is really um. Kind of the, the core focuses around that equity. Uh, and equitable use of public space and how that is realized both in terms of um. The existing public space and the maintenance of that as well as the programming um, and usage of it.
Um, uh, uh, forgive me, uh, because I'm not trying to put the screws to anybody, um, but. I don't necessarily understand it, what. You said vis a vis the actual funding. And so if you could redirect what you said. About what you anticipate being able to spend the funding on. It would be helpful to me. Um, if we're talking about, um, yes, and I'll, I'll stop there for.
Sure, and, and I think it's a, it's a little tough to say, because it's slightly carpe before the horse, since we don't have the final plan in place right now. Um, but again, I think kind of the core pieces to look at here um, are, are kind of a, a few different buckets there. Uh, broadly kind of acquisition of public space and publicly owned spaces. Maintenance of those spaces and how we are um, kind of implementing maintenance plans and capital investment plans within those spaces. Uh, and then equitably how we are uh, as a city programming and using those spaces, so I think those are the three main buckets. Uh, the plan process kind of started with an inventory of existing spaces, how they are used, um, a pretty broad community engagement. Uh, standpoint around how, how folks are using those spaces, how they're geographically located, um, and again, and um. So, so I don't know if that is, that's probably not a specific enough answer for you, but it's tough to get any more specific again without that plan in our hands um, quite yet.
Council member Dibala?
So the um, the. The reason that I would like to keep this. As a reduction. Rather than moving it to ARPA is just exactly that, as much as I appreciate. The public space management plan, and I cannot wait. For the results, um. There's no specifics. That I can justify using. ARPA money, there's not even a like, okay, so we're gonna develop a pocket park or whatever to have as a holding spot. A project that I can personally, at this point justify ARPA money for. And so I would prefer to reduce it now, and if we are so lucky as to have a public space plan and a concrete proposal that would fit. And I think we, we might have, um, then, then. This amount of money is not in the ARPA scheme that huge, we will be reviewing it. Yeah, every six months or so, because we want to spend the money.
Yep.
So that, that's my main thing, I want to spend all the money and I don't want to hold places for things, we don't know what they are yet, thank you.
Sure, and, and uh, I understand the timing is tough here, I'll just say kind of that example you gave. You know, could be the perfect example of kind of based on the conversations that have been happening within the, the plan process. You know, one of the implementation actions we might want to take, but I understand it's uh, certainly tough to, to talk about that abstractly.
And also remember Hansak?
I um, I, since I am the one who suggested that we move it to ARPA funds, that my thinking, just to be clear, was. That. Activities taking place in the public space of our city are the primary ways in which we bring all of the people of our city together. And they are useful for all people versus, for example, um, bike improvements, which in a perfect world would be used by all people, but. Aren't at the moment, um, and so uh, and, and I was sort of comparing those two pots of money in, in my mind, because they're both. Less restrictive funds for the departments that are using them, and they allow the implementation of design phases. And that was really important to me, but I was trying to figure out where we could cut reasonably, so um. I thought it was a good use of ARPA funding, but on retrospect, I, I want to take that back because I, I agree, we could amend that later. If, if and when we see some of the concrete plans and it's not a huge amount of money. Um, and I, and I think that we should go ahead and take it out, so otherwise we were, we are at risk of not being able to fund also. Some of our capital improvement expenditures that I think at the end of the day, we, we're gonna need to be able to also. Squeeze in somehow, at least some of them.
Yep, and, and I do just want to um, help folks to understand how the ARPA process going forward will work. So, one of the things that we will, we will have is we typically receive our updates in terms of where we are with ARPA spending. We also are going to need to make some decisions around things like balances in terms of our direct cash assistance and establishing a path forward for that. Um, we'll learn more about additional ARPA dollars from programs that are um, underway. Um, in terms of what monies may be available, we can do a ARPA budget amendment. Where we decide that we want to modify um, how we have um, designated our, our per dollars. And choose to have them go in a different route. Um, I do think it's important, and the thing that's a little challenging with ARPA is ARPA kind of is a separate budget. It has its own budget, it's really like you're working with two budgets at the same time. Um, and so not all decisions regarding ARPA have to be determined um, immediately. But we do have those federal deadlines that we have to make sure that we are obligating those monies and spending those monies in order to meet. Council member Gibson?
Yeah, first, I, I was pretty, I was pretty heavily involved in, in this. Following and participating in the public space management plan, so I, I do, I do uh, want to see it go, go forward. And I didn't want it to be held back if we made our policy choices, and then we could not uh. Move on it, and what I'm hearing is that we can, we don't have to wait to the next budget year, but we can amend. I think that was the word used, amend the ARPA budget. It's uh, three months from now. And put this, the same money back and started a project, or put more money in, if that, I'm comfortable with it, with it being, being dropped, but uh, because. It's been a very, very long time, and the potential use of, of our uh, public space. I mean, we, we, we've got a lot of opportunities.
And I, and I do just want to stress um. To, to uh, uh, Director Keller's point, we kind of don't know, right? So, we could have our presentation on the plan. We could get something that is so amazing and it costs a hundred thousand dollars. That we want to implement, and so this will allow us to um, to have a little bit more flexibility, especially because it seems like folks are amenable to using. ARPA dollars for, for an, a project, we just need to figure out what that project is. Council member Hansak?
Uh, would it make sense instead to um, go ahead and transfer it to ARPA, but at a very low dollar amount as a placeholder, which I wouldn't normally suggest. But it, we definitely don't want it to be lost in the shuffle, and I would like the department to be very. Aware that we, council, still consider this to be an important line item. And we're not simply cutting it from the budget entirely, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with um. Striking it entirely from the budget, because I, I do think it's critical that when we spend all this money and time on design phases of various. Uh, programming such as the public space management plan and the bike improvements planning, uh, that, that we then have. Something to spend, but whenever we put something in ARPA, we need as a city to be very responsible about knowing the money will get spent within the next few years. And we need to know exactly what it's going to be spent on, so I, 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 I mean, I would even. I would move, we, we maybe even make it five thousand, just, I know that everybody here will remember this, but you know, sometimes things get lost. Uh, and anyway, it's just an idea.
Okay, um. So. It, I, I, I think uh, Director Keller, will you forget this conversation when it comes time to have a conversation about which items? You want to?
Well, I hope, I hope we're being uh, recorded, so.
Yes, we are. This meeting is recorded. So I don't, I, I, I hear you, council member Hansak. But I, 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 I don't think.
Can I ask it a different way, mayor?
Yeah, sure.
Director Keller, would you prefer that we reduce it to five thousand rather than removing it from the budget, or would you prefer that we move it to ARPA?
Yeah, I.
Of, of the three options that are on the table.
Thousand dollars to ARPA.
No, 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 I know, I'm just asking, yeah, no, I mean, okay, maybe I should, those are the two options, we may get five thousand and move it to, and, and, or um, move it to. Excuse me, or strike it.
Certainly, I think we, we, it is um, to, to your, uh, I, I believe to your earlier point. You know, it's really important for us as a department that when we do. Planning work, that we have uh, money to show something from that planning work, right, that we don't just have a pretty piece of paper at the end of the day. Uh, and I think any money that helps us get towards um, true implementation from these plans and helping us see the progress. Um, from the work that was put into those papers, um, i- is extremely important, so certainly we welcome. Um, you know, any sort of funding to enable us to start taking those steps to implement. Um, what was a, a, a long planning process and a, a planning process that involved a lot of community members and, and community input.
Okay, so council member Hansak, you, you pulled back your recommendation to move the thirty thousand to ARPA.
I did. I'm just, I was just asking if we should make it five thousand instead.
Okay, so, so there's a new.
I would like to know if there's any seconds or thirds.
Second, we're gonna, well, you're, you're gonna get a hand vote, so this, this.
Okay, on five thousand.
On the five, so you're gonna get, we're, so it looks like we're gonna have. Two hand votes.
Okay.
Um, there's going to be one hand vote. To, um, and I'm just trying to make sure I keep notes of this, one hand vote to um. Eliminate the uh, the thirty thousand dollars from this fiscal year's budget. And then there is a separate hand vote to move five thousand dollars. From the general fund. To ARPA. As a placeholder. For um, future discussions of use of ARPA funds. On um, implementation of the public space management plan. Okay? Alright, so. Um. All those in favor of uh, the first proposal to cut the thirty thousand dollars from the budget, raise your hand? Alright, one, two, three, four, five, alright, and I think council member Small was, was a proxy for that. Those in favor of moving five thousand dollars to ARPA? One, two, three, alright, so um. Because these are competing for, competing items. The item has been removed. He, he told me he wanted a proxy for the elimination before he left. Alright.
Mayor, may I just clarify one point, um, during the conversation, it seemed like there may be an expectation that. The public space management plan give us a project to implement. That's, that's not the case, the public space management plan is a framework for decision-making, so it allows us to set priorities for projects that we have, you have, staff have. Um, there won't be a thing to, uh, once presented for us to take from that plan and implement, we'll still have to come up with it, but now we will have a process for it.
Mm-hmm. And I think, um, and I, I'm so grateful, um, Director Ubank, um, uh, Deputy City Manager Ubank said you brought that up, because that. Was also part of my. Thought process of what over the course of this upcoming fiscal year. Would be required, more or less staff work with council so that we can really try to streamline and identify. Which of the items and prioritizing things that are out of, coming out of the report that we want to actually turn into action items. That we need to make sure that we're able to fund, or, or give direction to count, give direction to staff. Um, along with if we need to make a modification to the ARPA budget. Around how to move forward with the implementation of the plan. I just, um, again, I'm just, we, we have a lot of plans. Um, and there's often a lot of discussion that has to happen, once a plan is presented to us, in terms of really trying to prioritize. What within those plans we want to adopt as a city. And so I, I, I do just feel strongly that this year will likely be the time in which staff will, will spend efforts to do that. Versus, and I could be totally wrong, and you all can come back and say, mayor, you were wrong, um, we. We are now looking at the ARPA budget, you all said we can come back. We're coming back now, and we have this recommend, this suggestion that we're gonna be thirty thousand or forty thousand dollars to do some design work or additional support. To actually come up with the framework for uh, um, added activities for the plan, and I'm. And I'm fine with saying that I was wrong, and we can revisit it during the ARPA discussion. All right, so that looks like, um, it seems like the vote on that one means that the um. The thirty thousand dollars will be removed. The um. The bike stay. And we need to make sure that we take that out of, I'm sorry, I'm keeping my cheat sheet as well, um, because I believe there was an item in the ARPA section. All right, so let's make sure that we move that out. If there was, is there one? Okay. Is now gone? Thank you. All right. We are, we are, we are cooking with grease now, y'all. All right, so. Um. I'm southern, fry everything in grease. Um, so. Now let's, uh, I want to, okay, so this is Councilmember Small, so um. Let's, let's deal with the the parking and, oh gosh, I thought that there was a duplicate in terms of the, yes. Just trying to make sure that I see it. The code enforcement purchase vehicle.
So we have, we have two different items. Correct me if I'm wrong, Director Chung. One is for parking enforcement, the other is for code enforcement. Both of those items are 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 separate items, not duplicates of one another.
I thought I saw one that had one car and then one that had two.
I I I had asked for my name to be removed entirely from any lease vehicle because it was associated with the the. Very early conversation we had about code enforcement. It was one vehicle associated with one code enforcement, so I, my name is somehow on this item and it should not be.
So that was.
Yeah, I don't know if there was confusion.
I don't see your.
On the, I'm on the far right. It says duplicate. I I don't, maybe I'm looking the wrong place. It says duplicate item, see below by Hanzak. I don't know why my name is referenced there.
Yeah, I thought I recall seeing in an earlier version that there was two separate proposals, if I remember.
That's true, and and as Councilmember Hanzak said, that has been taken off.
Okay.
And so now the two items that you see are two unrelated items. There's.
Perfect.
In the CIP is the purchase of a uh a currently leased vehicle for parking enforcement. In this, in the CIP is also um the purchase of two leased vehicles for code enforcement. And both of those items remain. Um, but uh Director Chung, um Councilmember Hanzak's name from line sixty-four should be removed. She's not associated with that proposal.
Yes, I'm aware.
Okay, all right, so um because we are, we are nearing the finish line on CIP. Um.
Um, do you want me to speak to this or me?
Yes, that would be great.
Um, so, thank you, I apologize. Um, and the, my reason for putting these on there is the same reason why a lot of the uh. Um expenditure things from uh CIP are on there. And that is that it was difficult to determine where the spending was coming from and the way in which we had it organized. As such, um, we have received additional information um as a result of of putting some of these things on here. That um I do think warrants at least uh consideration, and that is that uh. Acting Deputy City Manager Uvex did provide us with information that that both of these um programs where. Uh, we are purchasing leased vehicles, that we're coming off of leases. And the decision needs to be made with regard to the efficient um distribution of resources, given the fact we already own these cars to some degree. Um materially. Um, and in that regard, um, I am comfortable. Deferring to the uh decision-making of uh staff. About the proper administration of these particular leases moving to purchase. Um, and uh as such, if there is any sort of edifying comments that the staff could give. So that I uh seem like I am doing a reasonable thing, I would like it. Thank you.
Just walk it back if you wanna walk it back.
I'm, I mean specifically, I think that if we're trying to get rid of uh leases, which invariably. At the end of a lease, there is still value in the vehicle. Um, and you have the opportunity to purchase it. I don't know any person. That I know who's ever done it that didn't purchase a vehicle. And so I I don't know why we would act in contravention of what normal human beings would do. So that's my opinion about.
So I'll, I'll just comment briefly. Um, the three, all three cars that are being considered are all under the same lease. They're all the same car. Um, originally, the three cars were all used for code enforcement, um, but we have a vacancy in code enforcement. Um, and by happenstance, police have the need for uh another vehicle, and so they have been borrowing from code enforcement, the third vehicle. Um, the, the entire lease agreement is up in July of this year. Uh, and we entered into these agreements in twenty nineteen before the pandemic, also before um some of the supply chain issues. Uh, and so we have a very good price, um, and we've been able to get um some other pricing with the assumption that we would enter into a lease for another term. Um, and and have received those buyback numbers. Um, they are substantially higher if we were to enter into another lease for some term. Um, than the buyback of the current vehicles. Um, and so uh when you compare the cost of leasing vehicles ongoing. Uh, compared to the cost of purchasing, person, purchasing them out right now. Uh, you see about a ten thousand dollars uh savings over the lifetime of the use of the purchase vehicle. Um, and so just from a uh pure cost savings perspective, it just makes sense to go ahead and buy. Um, we also have a lot of confidence in these vehicles. We've been using them. Um, they've been assessed by our 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 um vehicle maintenance team. They are uh EVs, um, and so uh the the overall ongoing maintenance is relatively low as well. Um, so we think we'll get the full useful life out of all three vehicles. Um, so it's the perspective of staff that these are um prudent purchases.
Um, yes, and uh thank you, uh Director Erb. The dude who should be interim city manager, Uvex, um, because I appreciate that as an informative and concise statement. Of what the value of making this particular purchase is. And so I am comfortable with removing that from the list of uh of. Concerns that I have.
Okay, so Councilmember Small, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on what you are proposing. Are you proposing to remove your line item? Um, there are two items related to the lease of vehicles, the parking enforcement lease, as well as the code enforcement, um, the purchased leased vehicles.
Yes, and and so the total amount of that, I understand to be in the seventy K range.
Correct.
Yes, I I am comfortable with uh with providing that amount of money. Um, for these vehicles as a capital expenditure.
Okay.
I am comfortable with that.
Removing that item from the list.
That one, all those leases make sense to me, like suppose.
Could I ask a question now?
Sure, Councilmember Gibson.
I I think that the rationale for uh the purchase makes all kinds of sense. My only concern is, do we need all three vehicles? And and that's, that's not, um, that's not clear to me. Um, so uh.
Is that chief?
I can, I can respond. So they are for three persons, um, two code enforcement and one parking enforcement. Um, all of which who are out in the field daily almost all day.
There, there was some discussion about perhaps um. Let's say changing the scope of code enforcement, which might eventually mean. Uh, lesser need for as many personnel and perhaps as many vehicles. Is that um potential here?
Well, what I don't want us to do is conflate future policy decision-making that we need to do as a council. With um the needs that staff have based on the jobs that they have been defined and what is defined in code today. Um, so I I do think that if that is a discussion that we, we and we will have, you know, code enforcement is on the shortlist and we'll talk. Yeah, I I hear you. Um, and that is something that when we start talking about uh the process around. How do we wanna capture some of these future things? We want to make sure that we tackle as a council. Um, code enforcement, I know is one that folks want to put on that code, on that shortlist. Um, but we need as a council to set the direction around the um, the code around code enforcement. In order for there to be some decisions around what those job functions are, whether or not they need to be modified. Correct. So, so I would encourage us to um make sure that we're not. Um, as, as uh Iris said earlier, put in the cart before the horse. We, we haven't had those discussions. We haven't modified the code. They are currently staff have to function in accordance to the code that we have in place right now.
And Randy, I just wanted to, I wanted to say as the person who is considering putting this back in. Um, I do appreciate everything that you just said, and with regard to the effective use of these vehicles in the future. Um, I have no problem with the prospect of trying to get as much as we can for an electric vehicle when electric vehicles are hot. If we end up changing things around. Um, so I I did, I did want to say that I I appreciate your particular policy perspective on this. Um, it has been an issue in Word Six as well, and I I do anticipate working with you favorably on it as a premise.
Thank you. Councilmember DeBong.
Uh, quickly, there at one point were three code vehicles leased. And this is for two, so we are already dropping one.
No, so um the three vehicles were for three code enforcement officers. Um, the police were in need of an additional vehicle for parking enforcement, right? So they are using the, the, the third uh leased vehicle, and they will consider the purchase of that vehicle. While code enforcement purchases the other two.
Thank you.
Not to add to the confusion, but we do have a personnel decrease for Neighborhood Services Parking Enforcement. So I just wanted to point that out if the council chooses to eliminate that parking enforcement position. Um, it's still on our list.
What, what line item?
Uh, thirty-four.
Wow, thirty-four.
Yeah, I see that. Um, I thought that was. Even if there was only one, they still need a car.
So, okay, um, the Neighborhood Services parts, okay, so, okay, thank you, Chief, go ahead. We don't hear you yet.
Yeah, give, give me a second. I'm not trying to, with trying to work with one hand here. It's not that easy. Um, just, just to clarify that the vehicle uh situation, all of these vehicles were assigned to the police department. Uh, we had three leased vehicles. Um, when HCD transferred to, or excuse me, when housing on code enforcement transferred to HCD. Three of the vehicles that were assigned to the police department went with them. Two of them were these leased vehicles. The one leased vehicle that we are purchasing, uh, we kept that lease under police last fiscal year, and we transferred two of the leases to HCD. So these were vehicles that were previously assigned to police, were transferred to HCD. Uh, but in addition, if I'm not mistaken, to the two electric vehicles, there was an additional vehicle, hybrid vehicle that was transferred from the, from police to HCD as well. That helps.
Thank you, Chief. I I appreciate that. I I just, I'm, I'm comfortable with the prospect of um generating revenue through parking enforcement. Um, I'm comfortable with prospect of uh one person needing a car, even if there aren't two people. Um, and I'm, I am, again, I would reiterate that based on the information that we've been provided by staff. Um, as of late, I am completely comfortable with this particular expenditure.
Okay.
Want to say that again.
So, okay, so I just wanna make sure, cause it is ten ten.
Yes.
Um, so we are, so Councilmember Small is uh removing.
Yes.
His items.
For that, for those lines, yeah.
For those lines. Okay, hold on. That's what she is after weird. Okay, all right, so, um, so those items are removed. Um, so just want to, again, keeping us on track. Um, Councilmember Small, since we were talking about the leased vehicles, um, can we skip up really quickly to the decrease in Neighborhood Services Parking Enforcement Police?
Yes, um, we can certainly do that. I um, I had a conversation with Chief about this particular item. Um, about the relative um effectiveness of the program and the uh. Rep, the cost associated with the employee, and if we could have Chief come back on uh to have that uh. Statement made, I would appreciate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, appreciate.
Hurts and stuff, but.
Yeah, what, what was the, what was the clarity you were looking for?
You remember when we were talking about the um, the overall, like, if there was a value in the employee reduction here, vis a vis the revenue generation?
Yeah, I mean, most of, both of our, both of our parking enforcement uh officers, if that's what we're referring to. Uh, generate uh just about uh uh as as much revenue through their uh enforcement of parking enforcement. Uh, to pay their salaries. We have to give you the exact information if that's what you're, the clarity you're looking for.
Yeah, no, that, I think, I think at a, at a base level, um, since we sort of began this, this day in conversation, at least up here about trust. Um, it's my understanding from you that, that keeping this person in enforcement washes out with regard to revenue generation. And so we would actually be keeping an employee and uh. Providing a service that we think is of value to the city if this particular decrease in. Um, in cost associated with an employee was removed.
I, it's, it's an accurate statement. I don't know if it's a, it's a, it's a complete.
It doesn't have to be perfect.
One, one, one for one wash, but that's, that's pretty an accurate state.
Um, okay, in that regard, I would also like to say that um if that is the case. Um, or it is the case so that we're within uh decimals of some sort of equality there. Um, I am of the opinion that we should not reduce an employee that is not necessary to be reduced. Um, because there is a revenue generation here as well as a pretty tough economy. And so I would be comfortable putting, taking this off as well.
Okay, Councilmember Small is removing his decrease to the Neighborhood Services Police Force. All right, so we're taking that one out.
Um, and I think as far as I go, um, that's pretty much, those are the ones that I am comfortable taking back.
Okay.
At this time. Um, and in that regard, um, I am putting back. Maybe like about a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy, I think, overall. Um, but I am paying attention to that number because I want to get to uh Councilmember Hansak's ideal number. So if something else has to come out at the same time as we keep an employee, that's fine with me.
Okay, all right, so let's, let's keep on rolling. Um. So let's, let's try to move forward with clearing out uh CIP, um, streetlight upgrade. Are there any questions around the streetlight upgrade amount?
Um, I do have one thing about that that I think Daryl could probably uh speak to. Um, are. What is the relationship between us and Pepco with regard to the ownership of the poles? And um are we obligated to make these changes to these poles in any particular way? Thank you.
Uh, yeah, the streetlights in the city on the wooden poles are all owned by Pepco. Um, couple of years ago, we retrofitted all our streetlights to LED through Pepco. Um, so we pay Pepco for the energy use. Uh, greatly reduced as a result of the change in LED, into LEDs. However, if we ever wanna add a light. Um, uh, we need to pay Pepco for adding that light. So these funds are set aside to provide funds to. Add additional lighting upon community requests, and I know that was a critical piece when we worked on the LED lighting. Um, we got to see firsthand how the light distribution was between areas, neighborhoods and wards, and there were differences. And so we have extended our promise uh, then that if a neighborhood felt like they were underlit, that the city would be able to. Um, communicate with Pepco and negotiate on their behalf to add lighting. So we have those funds available for that. In addition, there are decorative streetlights that the city does own entirely. Those are the lights along Laurel Avenue, on um, Sherman Avenue and on Holton Lane. So those are underground lit lights. They're not wired from utility poles. And we're entirely responsible for the maintenance of those poles and fixtures and any upgrades.
You mean, it's the Holden across.
Yep, Holden lay across, yeah, not on the wooden poles, but these are the twelve to fifteen foot high lights. Um, that are of a decorative nature and are on a metal pole instead of a wooden pole. So those include the Flower Avenue lights as well as um, Holden Lane, Carroll Avenue, uh, Laurel Avenue. Um, and so these funds are also used to um, make repairs to those. The biggest issue there is uh. Death by car. So uh, we routinely have to replace uh, decorative lights along Carroll Avenue because they've gotten knocked over by a car.
That makes sense.
So this twenty thousand dollars generally tends to be enough to, to provide some funding. Uh, streetlights from Pepco can go anywhere from three thousand to eight thousand dollars. Uh, when we're doing uh, replacements or repairs to our decorative lights, it's in the couple thousand dollar range. We're about to um. Make a bunch of repairs through contractor for lights that have been hit along Carroll Avenue. So those will be going up soon. But these are the funds that we use to um, make that.
I'd just like to say, this is the only, this is the last one that I'm willing to consider giving back, cause um. It seems to me like if I am comfortable. With personally putting back around two hundred thousand dollars potentially into the budget. For spending um, at the same time as trying to hold the line on spending. Um, and so this also seems like it would make sense to me and um, based on my understanding of the areas. And the nature of the relationship between uh, city uh, municipality and uh, Pepco. I am also comfortable with this twenty thousand dollars, however it has to be spent. That's what I would say about that. So I, it doesn't have to be moved to ARPA. It doesn't have to be like if, if the staff is comfortable spending this money. In a particular way, I am comfortable with it.
I just wanted to ask, may I, just the, the, at least a part of that, it sounds like public safety. If, if indeed. You did agree that the neighborhood assessment uh, was, was accurate and you put it that. And that's, this is something that's uh, high, high priority. It seems to be to make sure that we do, do do that.
Okay, so I'm hearing the proposal is to remove the um. The uh, deduction customer Smalls is withdrawing his item. Uh, for the um, streetlight.
Right.
Upgrade.
Yeah, that, that to me seems like an entirely reasonable uh, purchase, given my um. Uh, campaign uh, perspective on safety and streets.
Okay. All right, and so the last item in the CIP, and then uh, at least we'll, we'll be done with that. Um, is the special events and programs. Councilmember Fulcher proposed a fifteen thousand dollar cut there. Are there any questions, thoughts before we go to a hand vote on that one?
Uh, was, was that the total amount fifteen or fifteen thousand out of something larger?
The total is forty-five thousand.
Okay.
And there's a proposed cut of fifteen thousand.
Okay, that makes sense.
I think there was a question about what that was, and so if we need that clarity, uh, the director's on.
Like, I'd like to hear it. I, I don't know anything about this line item. I haven't.
Ira, can you address that?
So, certainly, thank you. Um, uh, David. Yeah, so, so I think this uh, the, the title of this in the budget book is, is slightly misleading here, um, being called special events and programs. Uh, i- i- this is actually our transit and um, pedestrian improvement funds. So I believe we sent um, an update to council outlining um, exactly the proposed uses for that money. Uh, including uh, about four different uh, projects. This is also where our safe routes to school programming. Uh, funding comes from as well. So I believe the current amount is forty-five thousand. So this would be um, a, a cut of uh, fifteen thousand here. Proposed.
All right, with that, we just lost council member Small, but I think we need to go ahead and keep pressing on. Um, do we, uh, uh, let's go ahead and do a hand vote. Um. Listen, like, let's just vote. All right, um, all those in favor of removing fifteen thousand dollars from the uh. Special events and programs um, for HCD planning. All those ra- raise your hands. Got one, two, three? Oh darn it, we're split. We need a vote from Small. All right.
Delay that.
We'll delay that one. Let's get on to the next one. All right, um, one of the things that would be helpful um, is to uh, let's do a quick uh. Uh, discussion of the revenues and the modification.
Yeah, mayor, excuse me, um, we had pointed out that there is a um, was an error, a double count in the CIP. It's now a good time to. Put that out there.
Yes.
There was a, a thirty-two thousand dollar item referenced as the Public Works Work Order. System that's been included in the operating budget, but it was also reflected in the capital budget. So we can decrease the CIP by thirty-two thousand uh, for that duplicate item.
Perfect.
So we just need to add it. Add it as a subtraction, yeah.
Can I ask you to repeat that? So, in other words, thirty-two thousand was in the budget twice.
Yes.
Both times taken from the general fund.
Right, once uh, reflected in the CIP, the other reflected in the uh, thirty-one hundred Public Works Administration budget.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, general fund both times. But we only need it once.
Thank you so much, Director Brathwaite. I had that on my list and kind of forgot that I had it on my list. All right, so, um, so let's tackle. Let's tackle uh, the tree fund uh, revenue correction. That is in the, if we can get a brief explanation of the uh, modification in the tree fund revenues that's noted in the revenue section.
Mayor, we, we may want to make, wait for council member Small, cause he does have a um, related ninety-seven thousand dollar reduction.
That is right, he does. Thank you. All right, um. Okay, well, let's go ahead and vote on. Well, good, cause we need you. We had a hung jury on an item. It is the um, decrease in the special events and programs for HCD. Forty-five thousand, um, a reduction of fifteen thousand from that line item. All right. Any question?
It says transit.
Yeah, what's that mean?
You can, um.
Thank you, thank you, just, we're just gonna do, do over.
I, I, I appreciate.
Thank you, there's no more snacks in the bag. I'm allergic to nuts and there's nothing but almonds back there, so.
All right, thank you so much, Mrs. Keller. If you could just explain um, this uh, what this fifteen thousand dollars will go, go towards.
Sure, and I'll use my second opportunity here to, to run through the bullets real quick from staff on, on the exact uses. So again, just to be clear, this is for um, uh, our pedestrian improvement programs. Um, including safe routes to school. So a portion of this is for our safe routes to school and pro- uh, incentive programming. And then it is also for specific improvements. Uh, this year we've identified pedestrian improvements on Grant Avenue. On Flower Avenue as well as a few uh, pilot projects potentially on Jackson and Hammond, uh, Laurel or Maple. And this includes both the improvements as well as the outreach uh, costs for, for that work.
My, my first confusion here is that it is why this isn't in public safety. Or not public safety, but public works. Um, and then uh. If we're, if we're reducing it, are we, are we putting in fifteen or are we reducing it fifteen?
Reducing it fifteen.
Um, I'm with Shannon.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do that vote. All right.
He said he's with Shannon. That's all you need to know.
All right, all those in favor of cutting the special events and programs budget for HCD planning by fifteen thousand, raise your hand. All right, one, two, three, four, move forward. All right, so I'm gonna give us a couple of low hanging fruits before we get into tree discussion. Um, and I'm gonna pick on myself for a few minutes. Uh, can I get a couple of hand votes on the position holes that uh, I proposed? Uh, so the policy and data analyst, uh, yes.
Be- before you do that, I have a question about the overall list, just a factual question. Um, that I missed, missed on Monday night. So on the vacancy list, the very last one is code enforcement officer. So are you intending to replace the third officer?
I'm sorry, councilman, you faded off at the end.
Okay, so in, on the vacancy savings list. At the very end is code enforcement officer, which.
On the list from last meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Which position is that? Is that the second third, second position of the search?
That was a, a leftover from, I don't remember exactly how it happened, but council member uh, Hansak had removed. Uh, that request from the list. And so um, during that discussion, we, we, we struck that from the vacancies. That was assuming that there was a, a six month delay, um, and that the person was transferred at some point later. And I'm sorry, it may not have been Councilman Hansak, it might have been Councilmember Seaman. But either way, it, it, it should not, you should not consider it any longer.
Right, it's not, we should cross it out altogether.
Right, right.
It's not, okay, thank you.
Okay, no worries. So let's, let's do a couple of quick hand votes on some stuff that'll just make us feel like we're making progress. All right, uh, so uh, I proposed a uh, six month freeze on the policy and data analyst. In the city admin section, that's line thirty-one. Um, can I get a quick hand vote? All those in favor of moving forward with that item? Remove, yep. Yep, it's, no, I'm keeping it. It's the sixty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight, the hiring freeze on line thirty-one, six month hiring freeze.
So this is in favor of delay.
Yes. All right, how many hands I got? Awesome. All right, so let me make that one blue. We're done talking about that one. All right, let's go to the uh. Business maintenance specialist, which is a, was also a part of that vacancy hold list, um, line thirty-seven. All those in favor of holding that item for six months?
Yeah, I know, there's no numbers.
And there's no numbers here, surely.
Under your public works.
Under your public work. Under public works, first page, yep. Okay, all right, everybody, everybody ready? All right, so uh, this was the uh, savings of the uh, holding on the hiring of the building maintenance specialist. For six months, um, for a reduction of fifty-four thousand, eight hundred, twelve. All those, okay, moving forward with that? All right. Okay. Uh. Oh, I did a six month, oh, no, we're not touching that sustainability manager just yet. Nope, no, we're not doing that one. Okay, let's see, let's get to, it feels like I had one more. All right, so the last one was a licensing specialist for HCD, line forty-seven. Um, six month hold, saving of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine. Yep, it should be under HCD.
Top of the second page.
Yep, it should be right under HCD, right under decreased hold licensing specialist. Yep. All right, all those in favor of that one? All right. We are making some progress. All right, so let's talk about, uh, let's do something nice, um, snacks. All right. All those in favor of? Councilmember Folters, one thousand dollar addition for rec snacks, volunteer snacks. All right.
Top of the second page.
Okay, all right. So, we are getting very, very, very close. Okay. So let's take a quick pause and go to the tree fund discussion with the tree revenues. I'm gonna turn things over to Director Brathwaite.
Yes, um, in the process of putting together the budget, um, the urban forest manager intended to. Uh, recommend uh, uh, using ninety-seven thousand dollars in the tree fund. Not general fund, uh, for the tree Tacoma program. Um, the uh, finance director used the pri- prior year's number of twenty-five thousand. So the intended number was to be ninety-seven. So we've added an additional seventy-two thousand dollars of revenue that was intended to fund that program. Uh, the purpose of tree Tacoma, uh, tree planting is to be funded entirely with the. Tree fund and not general fund dollars. So this would just reflect what the original intention was, which gives you seventy-two thousand dollars more of revenue. Now, obviously, there's another um, proposal on the table for that, I think two more. Um, and those can be discussed, but this just puts it to what it was originally intended, so. The, the numbers are, are balanced.
So, so for twenty-eight, am I?
Uh, council member Small, can you turn on your mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. So for twenty-eight, am I supposed to come off of my thing or say, okay, or anything on that? Isn't that the rate, number twenty, aren't we, that's where?
Oh, no, we're talking about the revenues right now because council member Hansak has, uh.
All right, so.
Yes, you have the entire removal of ninety-seven thousand on line twenty-eight.
Yes, and so in theory, that's all a wash because it was a, because it wasn't general fund anyway.
Uh, well, it didn't count towards general fund. Uh, if you reduced it, it would just stay in the tree fund. So it didn't have a savings to the general fund.
Okay. So if I need to go say, okay, back to that, I don't, I don't care because. There have been statements made to me about the importance and emphasis of trying to ensure that uh, poorer people. Who need the money to put in a tree, get that. And so if that. All of these things seem like it would be okay because that doesn't have anything to do with the number or the tagger.
Right, that's right.
Okay, so I want to make sure that, that we are all, cause I'm trying to keep track. And now I, I fully understand Director Chung's um. A, 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 a challenge. We're trying to keep track of the spreadsheet and the items that will need to be modified.
Small, are you retracting the ninety-seven thousand?
If, if that ninety-seven. I believe that I am because of what was just stated. And therefore, it seems like a good idea. So, yes.
Yeah, okay. The tree fund is separate, okay? So um, and so this, this was an item that was also um. Acknowledged that it's a separate fund, um, and so it, it won't impact just for folks that are following along at home. It won't impact in any way our total number of, of expenditure savings to date. Because as council member Small called out, this was related to and would have been funded through the tree, tree fund, um, and not the general fund.
And, and they found more money.
And they found more money. Okay, so now, let's go to um, council member Hansak. Let's make sure that.
That mine is clear and understood.
Yes.
I want, I want to also make another.
That mine is clear and understood. Yes, I want, I wanna also make another public statement. Um, I know I already said it once, but if anybody different is listening now, it's really important to me that folks know that I. I want to maintain every single aspect of our tree program as is. But what I am proposing here is a slim trim in recognition of the fact that. Part of the purpose of our tree fund is to uh. Support the maintenance of our tree cover and therefore I think it is very reasonable that we take approximately one fifth of staff salary. From the tree fund and put it towards our current urban forest manager's salary. And I'm proposing a similar type of cut in the sustainability programming funding. But that'll come up in a second, but for the same with the same kind of rationale, so very minimal, no impact on the Casey Tree Program, no impact as I understand it. Um, no impact on the um urban forest manager, no impact on the programming, but uh a. Pull from the tree fund, excuse me, am I speaking right? A pull from the tree fund of twenty K towards the general fund that will allow us to further reduce our taxes just a little bit. And also be economically rational. Thank you.
And what that will do is move a hundred and seventeen thousand from the tree fund into the. General fund for FY twenty four. We currently have a hundred and ninety seven in the tree fund. Um, so it can certainly absorb that deduction. Um, we do hope the tree fund. Lasts for years and we anticipate forty to fifty thousand dollars each year coming in from. Tree tree fee and lieu payments, so we're hoping it will be self sufficient. The intention is to really jump on the program over the next few years. We assume it will decline um over time. Um, but to a to a more uh normal rate of, you know, expenditures of fifty thousand dollars a year versus the. Ninety seven that we're trying to get to. This year we did seventy three, next year we're doing ninety seven, you know, we're we're at a top high level and. We anticipate that it will drop off to a point where we're. Funding it in balance.
Okay, and I do just want to make sure for for folks that are 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 at home, yeah. Yeah, the folks that are at home. So what is being for what, one, what is being identified? Is that there were tree fund, there was an uh uh item that there was tree fund revenues or monies from our tree fund. Because we get monies for to fund the tree fund through. Uh, people have to take down trees and they have to pay fees and things like that. Um, and so what we're really talking about is taking some of the tree fund revenues. That sits typically in a separate bucket of uh separate account. Um, and moving some of those monies into our general fund reserves. Which will allow us to fund tree related activities. That are currently in our general fund to fund. Am I summarizing that properly? Okay, and I just want to make sure that the. Seventy two thousand and the twenty thousand that's here, uh, which is at ninety two thousand and then. There, I think there's a remaining balance within our tree fund that's still there for that purpose of trees. Um, doesn't. Tremendously negatively impact our ability to continue to do our business as usual. It's, this is more of an accounting move.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Keeps us closer to two cents. I'm happy with that.
Okay, so. Councilmember Devon.
Quick question. Is this intended to be a one time move or are we gonna depend on the tree fund for part of the tree? Manager's salary.
Since, can I speak to my intention? My intention actually in this particular case was to like, let's see how this goes. I think this is super economically sensible as a long term measure. Because it appears that we have the level of revenue flow flows coming in and out. That we can totally sustain this over time and it seems like a very economically rational move. Um, and we can see how things go. I anticipate we are going to be having to make harder, bigger cuts later. So again, in the spirit of making gentler moves now that I think are very economically rational. I am proposing that this might be something we do in perpetuity, but I think we should wait and see. There's a lot of moving parts.
So right now, right now. Right now, just to make sure I understand, we have. Where is? Forty to fifty thousand dollars a year coming in.
Yes.
And we spend on the tree program, the planting about how much every year?
Uh, historically, we've transferred twenty five thousand each year. This year we did seventy three.
And next year.
Which is the start of the tree Tacoma program.
Right, and next year we're.
We're intending projected, our budget is ninety seven.
So the tree Tacoma program going forward is expected to be bigger than the historic.
Yeah, this year, next year and 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 on on into the future. Though we don't anticipate it to be at the ninety seven thousand expenditure level. In perpetuity, we we assume it'll go down to about a forty or fifty thousand dollar a year expenditure.
So as you said, balancing out the the estimated long term income, but for this year, we haven't.
I I think we can wait and see, you know, um, I think the thing is is that there's gonna be changes in our tree cover over time. Right now, we know we have a right, we're gonna hit a threshold where, in fact, if we do our job, right? We we won't be able to plant a whole lot more trees if we're doing a good job. And we're gonna, we're hitting an old growth threshold where a lot of trees are coming down potentially, although you said old growth trees. If they're unless they're, I mean, if they're in bad shape, wouldn't necessarily pay into the tree fund, so that may not be the case. But I mean, again, we, there are gonna be development changes all throughout the city, so I think it's, I think it's a tool that we we should rationally use. As we want to sustain many of the other programs that we're also trying to do about equitable housing options and um. You know, it's it's a small cut for a good gain and it doesn't hurt anything with right now, because we weren't able to actually spend all the money that we had. Right, moving, so.
This is sort of like a a reserve. It is, it's it's a separate kind of reserve and we're we're using that reserve right now. And we're not gonna be able to use it forever, but we don't know how the tra- trajectory is in terms of in and out, but okay, so I.
And and I just want to to. Reconfirm. That even though we're moving these dollars into the um, the general fund, which means kind of just goes towards. Paying the bills. The understanding is that, you know, uh, some of our ca- our costs associated with. Tree work, either um, some of our projects that we have that are in the general fund related to the environment. Or um, uh, some proportion just because it's, you know, Marty's salary is paid out of the general fund, so it's it's. It's kind of put into the general fund, but it's not necessarily the case that the tree fund money. We're saying is going to go towards. You know. Building improvements or something. It is, it is clear that those funds could be and will be used for. Um, activities that are related to the purpose of the tree fund. Right, okay. Right, for the truth.
That's why it's so important, I think, that it goes directly to into wage. It's a very clear, clear cut transaction and it's important for legal reasons. I mean, perhaps we do need to consult skip, but it appears to be. Uh, in alignment with the code.
Okay, all right, so it seems like.
I'm just, uh, I'm sorry, I just wanna say that I really appreciate that. Even though the three hundred twelve, like in captures how much it costs to get that that tree in the ground. It doesn't capture Marty's time that it takes to go out to evaluate trees that are coming down. And so I appreciate that this is an effort to catch some more of those external costs that people might not think about. When it comes to the tree canopy.
Okay, all right, so um, it looks to me like, um, I don't know why we would ever vote on revenues, but we must. Find me the money and I will say yes. Um, so uh, first item is a tree fund revenue. Reallocation to the general fund revenues of twenty thousand dollars proposed by Councilmember Hunza. All those in favor of that move? All right, and um, I don't know if we vote on the staff proposal to reallocate the tree seventy two thousand dollars. Of the tree fund into the general fund. Again, these are, these funds are used. Yep, we still gotta vote and make sure that everybody knows that we okayed it. All right, so. Now, we are getting very, very, very close. I know it doesn't feel that way, but we are. You're you're gonna timeout, we may not get to our other agenda items. But I I need us to keep pushing. We have the two big items that we are gonna talk about next. I think the first one is the sustainability manager. Right now, we have. A number of proposals on the table. Um, one is a, and I'm willing to walk mine back, and yes, uh, I will drop.
Point of order, point of order, mayor. Uh, could we perhaps talk about one that we might be in more agreement about that's less complicated, like the economic development specialist? Before we do this one, it might change my vote on this one. Is that? Would that be okay with other folks? Okay, thank you.
I love that you think that that one's gonna be less debated.
It only has two line items instead of four. I don't know, yeah.
All right, so it sounds, let's let's do this. Let's stick with. The sustainability manager. I know that there's been, um, because there's a lot of proposals that are here. And in the interest of time. I am going to allow for Councilmember Dibala. To speak through. Her proposal. In attempt to um. At least give us a a a fewer options to start with.
And be, and before I do that, do you wanna do a check on where we are with general revenue or not?
Right now, we are at.
A general fund.
General fund, we're at eight hundred twenty seven thousand eight hundred and thirty three.
And that means in in reduction.
No, in reductions, yes.
So, so, so before we. No, I don't.
We're still like, so for example, so I just wanna, okay, just to help folks get it. Um, so for example, let's look at the sustainability manager item.
Oh, yeah.
These are all duplicates.
Right.
Only one or two options, meaning an option in terms of salary and option in terms of program cost will ultimately be counted. So what that means is there are some things that are counted, like for example, I could say, hey. I decided I want to take back my hold item. Right, so I'm gonna take that from the list. You know what, actually, I'm gonna do that. Can we withdraw my hold item? Right?
That's one less thing.
That's one less thing, but when you scroll down, you will see our number has gone down. Right, so now we're at seven hundred twenty three, I mean forty three, right? So. So, once we clean up the options for and we have the vote.
We'll see.
It's not gonna be what it's high as it was. I I do think that it's important for us to tackle duplicates.
Yeah, okay, so seriously, can can we like take a five minute break down before it's just, if we're gonna do this? Hey, I, I don't, I think that I, I don't even know who I'm in agreement with outside of this thing anymore. I'm going, I'm going to assume that um. I'm going to assume at the end of this discussion, that I think I have agreed with. Cindy.
Okay.
When she called me.
I think that you did.
Yes, okay.
But I will just restate it.
Let's restate it.
Everybody. Okay. Um, and I might ask for a brief bit of of data information on the actual program, so. Um, I appreciate that we are trying all very hard to reduce the um. The the general fund items that affect the tax rate. Um, so, so I'd like to do this in two parts. The first is the timing and the. And therefore the level of the position. And I think that everyone has agreed that we want the person, whoever they are, sooner rather than later. I discovered with the help of staff that. The budget book had a higher salary and benefits listed in it than what was advertised. And so the staff and I estimated that we were about twenty five thousand dollars off. On salary and fringe from what, from the top end of what is currently advertised. So again, to to restate, um, the position is advertised, there are people who have applied. The next step would be screening and interviewing if. We weren't having this discussion about possibly. Changing the job description. Um, so all what we talked about last week, I'm not, uh, last Monday night, I'm not gonna repeat. Um, but just to say that my propos- part one of my proposal would be to reduce the salary and fringe. To twenty five thousand dollars by twenty five thousand dollars. To reflect what actually is going on as opposed to what was going on last year when we had someone who'd been here ten. Twelve years and had risen up in the ranks. Um, and that would allow us to move ahead. Um, with filling the position and doing all the things we talked about last week. And I'm gonna ask if the city, the acting city manager has anything to say in a minute, but the second part of the proposal. Is hearing what everyone is saying about about dollars and recognizing for myself. That this program has already been reduced by staff before we even saw it. And it was reduced last year. Um, and so on, it it it's a big number, I get it, so I'm suggesting that. That we go with a reduction um of the forty thousand dollars. That Gibson and Hansak had originally proposed. And I.
In the program.
In the program dollars.
Yeah.
And so. We could go with a bigger reduction, we can discuss that, but before we do that, I would like to have. Um, just a little bit of focus on what the money has been spent for and what it is programmed for in the future. So the dollars that I under- well, here, why don't you just say it?
Yeah, I have, and I'm passing out, um.
And I forgot.
Past four, five years of um expenditures related to the grants that the city has given out. It's broken out into multifamily, commercial and single family. Um, I tried to show it in terms of by ward, by year and by the type of um. Uh, energy efficiency measure that was uh implemented, and this is based on questions that I got asked over the course of the last few days. Um, what is proposed in the budget um are um. There's a twenty thousand dollars for outreach, which I think is going to be very critical, given what everyone has said about the current county's program ramping up. Um, as well as federal and other programs ramping up, we wanna make sure that we're doing outreach um extensively and with a. Single person office, you can't do that by yourself. So we would be uh using consulting services to do outreach uh for the programs to try to. Get as many of our Tacoma Park residents and businesses and multifamily owners as possible to apply for. And get in line for the the county funds and other funds as it become available. Um, in addition to that, and and you saw it um when you got the budget worksheet, um, as well as there's comments in the. In the budget book, uh, but the amount of um funding that we have allocated per. Per category, and it's not a hard fast line, but based on past spending. We um allocated fifty thousand dollars for commercial business grants, uh, twenty five thousand for low and moderate income. Energy efficiency grants, seventy five thousand dollars for multifamily efficiency grants. And ten thousand for single family efficiency grants. Uh, so those would be funding that we would anticipate using once county dollars have been spent. So this would be supplemental work that we are trying to put further push and enhance um programs that residents can use. Um, on the, on the terms of low and moderate income, um, we've been able to um. The programs for energy efficiency for low and moderate income are are very restrictive. Uh, and have to be specifically focused on energy efficiency measures. What we've been able to do with our funds. Is enable those folks that have other building efficiencies in their home, like their roof is bad and you can't get a new roof. Uh, with energy efficiency funds, but the city will cover the roof costs. So that the person can implement the insulation and the other energy saving measures, so we've been able to really. Partner well uh with the existing energy efficiency grants, particularly for low and moderate income. So if somebody has a, you know, waterproof damp basement kind of thing or, oh, you know, they can't seal their house because they're. You know, they they've got other issues, uh, we've been able to partner with the energy efficiency funds and use our funds to do the other. Um, structural enhancements to the property. Uh, so those are the level of funding that we've got um available. Um. Uh, or that we, we envision using. I, I can't say for certain how many grants that will actually translate into, again, because our goal is to use county funds first and then city dollars next. So we're hoping that we exceed the numbers that we've done in prior years. Um, and it really depends on the applications that we get through the door. And the costs associated with it. We don't pay, typically don't pay a hundred percent of someone's grant application. It, it ranges depending on what the, what the application is. We've. Uh, this past year, our grants ranged from fifty-six hundred to thirty-five thousand. Um, so it really depends on the project, depends on, um, the scope of work. And also we ask the, um, applicants to sh- to tell us and show us what other funds they have, how much they are able to contribute toward it. So we try to meet them halfway in terms of the, um. Uh, amount of funds we can get. There are applications that we will approve. Where there is clearly no additional extra funding available for the property, so we take that all into account. Uh, particularly when we're looking at the impact of the grants themselves. And you see on the sheet there the type of, uh, work that we've done. It's, it's the usual, i- it's all now, uh, removing gas. Um, so transitioning from gas appliances to electric appliances, transitioning from gas boilers to. Heat pumps and energy efficiency, energy efficient, um, heating and cooling systems. Um, uh, hot water heaters is another big one. Changing from gas hot water heater to electric hot water heaters. Um, so that's the type of work that, um, is being funded through these programs. I would strongly advocate for not reducing the salary or the program budgets, because I think we're really at a critical time. Um, we do want to have flexibility when we're interviewing candidates. Uh, I can't stress the importance of getting the right person for the job. It's a very difficult job, uh, to be doing, uh, you know, being a one, one-person, uh, program. And they have to be very sharp, uh, and very, uh, active and very well-networked. Um, and we're in a very competitive environment. There's a lot of, uh, organizations looking for similarly. Uh, situated individuals that care about sustainability and these types of issues, so, uh, it will be a very competitive market.
Director Brayford, can you speak a little bit to some of your past experience in trying to hire for that position and what some of the challenges were?
Yes, we, uh, went through an extensive process in November and December, uh, which I think ended in January. Uh, we, um, interviewed, uh, much to HR's strict grant, I think I interviewed ten people. Um, and, uh, we had a, a short list of two. Um, and then really strongly, uh, recommended one, and we were not able to meet the salary requirement of that person, so they declined the job. And then we went back out to, um, advertise again.
So, um, so in summary, uh, the, the. Salary and fringe reduction. That is in here is not changing the job position, not changing the level. It's adjusting the budget.
To the advertised.
Right, to the advertised. Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Um, and then the amount of program money that person would have to work with. I had talked with a couple of you about a bigger reduction, and then I was told that there was already forty thousand. Parked on the table, so I didn't try to mess with changing that number. Ag- again, until we had this conversation. And, um, so, so my priorities are to get someone in the position sooner rather than later and to have them have some money to work with. In order to be able to attach, to attract the, the funds from the other. Other projects and to, and, and just one more thing. So in the conversations I've had with people, I've heard things like. What exactly is the money being used for? Well, I think you've just seen that. And, and how does that reflect? Are we reaching all of the folks in our community, or are we just catering to single-family homeowners? I think this shows that, that we're shifting every year more and more toward not just catering to single-family homeowners. Um, and I've heard that, um. Now I've just lost it, uh.
Well, I also wanna speak to that issue on single-family property owners, that the grants that we give them, uh, were primarily early, in the early years with. Energy audits, so we had up to five hundred dollars that you could give. Whereas with multifamily property owners, as I've mentioned, we're giving up to thirty-five thousand dollars. Commercial properties, uh, have ranged from ten to thirty thousand dollars, so it's, it's an entirely different scale. We're not giving single-family property owners thirty thousand dollars to, you know. Do their geothermal, um.
Right, right.
It's different with single-family, low and moderate income. We're doing everything we can do to maximize energy efficiency within their properties. Uh, there were quite a few, uh, programs that, um, particularly with multifamily where we. Were able to support solar as well, so that's something.
Right, and I was also asked about attaching to, uh, other programs, and so as Director Brayford said. Um, the requirements for this program are to tap the other available funds first. You must apply to empower and to the so, to the renewables program. Um, you have to do an energy, a benchmarking audit. Um, and there's a couple, a couple of other requirements like that, so it's not just, oh, here's your check. It's part of coordinating an effort across a number of programs. And giving that individual assistance. To the, um, to the landlord with their tenants. Not just the landlord or to the single-family homeowner. And my last point in, in that is that I heard. That there was some concern about, um. What kinds of si- of, of landlords get the money and are they just not? So, so part of this program is to work with the tenants as well.
So, uh, the programs we've given for multifamily have been entirely with the owners of the multifamily buildings.
Okay.
Not the, not the tenants. Early on, uh, when we first kicked off our energy efficiency program, we did do, um, many programs with. Tenants, um, terms of light bulb change out and replacing appliances and those things like that.
Okay, quick time check. It is eleven oh three. Um, based on the discussion that has happened thus far, and, and keeping in mind, I'm gonna have to figure out where we're gonna move our next agenda items unless we plan to spend the night. Um, the, are there any council members that currently have items? Related to the sustainability manager that you would like to withdraw? Um, Director Chung, I would like to withdraw my, my proposal for the hold. I just wanna make sure that's reflected in the spreadsheet. Are there any other council members that would like to withdraw their name or association with an item that was proposed?
I'm sorry, I just wanna understand, um. Councilmember Dibala, is your recommendation, it's just the twenty-five thousand, it's not the twenty-five thousand and the forty thousand?
Why? Given that I see the need for reductions. Um, I would recommend the forty. I would not recommend going further than that.
Okay, are there any other council members that would like to withdraw their item? Councilmember Hansak?
I don't know whether I can do this, but I am listed, um, with the forty thousand cut to the program costs with Gibson. I would actually like to reduce mine to twenty, because I can see that there are a lot of equity-related measures. That are being implemented with program funding, and, uh, that speaks to me. Um, so I would like to, yeah, I, equity is really important. I think this is one pathway, especially if we have a quality person in the position, which I am. Understanding we can achieve at this point. Um, I think. I think with twenty thousand instead of forty thousand cuts, we can improve the quality of our multifamily housing, and that's really important to me.
Okay, Councilmember Gibson, uh, do you align with that or should we add a separate item?
Perfect.
So, uh, can we remove, Councilmember Hansak, would you like to be removed from the association of the forty thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have, uh, Councilmember Gibson. At, at the forty, and then we'll have Councilmember Hansak as a separate item at the twenty.
And, uh, may I just make a comment, um. My, part of my rationale for, uh, cutting this particular, uh. Program funding is that the, uh, this is from our general funds. And we, and we wanted, we, we made, we talked a lot about that this person was going to seek. Our federal, state, county stuff that may fill this same gap. We don't know, but at least there's opportunity. So that it's not, hopefully, the overall program dollars will be greater. But we're taking money, we're saving money from, from, taking money out, uh, we're saving money from. Ex- expanding it in, in, in general funds, so I, I wanna keep the forty thousand.
Councilmember Small, can you hit your mic?
I'm, I'm, I'm really sorry, I'm getting tired and whatnot. Um, so. Regarding number forty-two, which is mine. I think. Like I said, I had agreed with Cindy. So does that mean this stays the way that it is?
That, that means that we can take, remove yours. We can align you and add you to the balla. And, um, are you proposing of, uh, of forty thou- uh, cut to program at all? Because your original item was keep the, um, eliminate the program cost, so are you aligned with?
I am with Gibson.
Okay.
On the program cost.
Okay.
I think, and I am removing forty-two.
Okay, perfect. All right. Okay, so I think we are closer.
I think.
All right.
Wait, where is the, where's the?
Fulture is at the sixty.
Uh, there's one other item that I had, I guess, and that was, uh, what, what line it is. Where I was, it's on here, but it's not on here. There, there's. Which item? In other words, where it says I was dropping the salary, it's not on here.
Mayor. If no one's aligning with twenty, I, there's no point in me bothering a vote on that. I'd, I'll go with forty. I'll do, you can put me back on forty. Yeah, just put me back on forty.
I, I'm fine with withdrawing. Uh, line thirty-nine.
Okay, so I wanna, okay, give me, give me. Hold on, alright. We're, 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 we're working towards a resolution, but I'm trying to make sure I understand what we're talking about. So. Councilmember Fulture. Hansak and Gibson, there was a proposal on the table for a sixty thousand dollar cut to the salary and fringe. For the sustainability manager. Councilmember Fulture, you're stating that you will, you wanna withdraw your name from that? Councilmember Hansak?
And Councilmember Gibson.
Okay, Councilmember Gibson, Councilmember Hansak, are you still in the sixty thousand dollar reduction in staff?
No, I pulled off on that already.
Okay, perfect, so we're gonna withdraw that one?
Yeah, so we're all, so we're all on Randy's forty.
So now, what we have on the table. We have two votes on the table. One is to reduce. The sustainability manager, is there, I guess we're now still in a manager. We haven't changed the title. The sustainability manager program budget, and again, that's for grants and contracts. By forty thousand dollars. And then there is a separate item to decrease. The salary offer for the sustainability manager by twenty-five thousand, okay?
To, to the, to the, uh, advertised rate.
May I just make one point of clarification? I just wanna make sure this is clear.
Yep.
That the advertised rate is the rate at which we were not able to hire the last person. I just wanna make sure that you understand that.
That is why I wanted to take it down to the top of that, not any further.
It, it, it was not, it, we were way below what, uh, last person would hire. Ninety-five was not very, not anywhere close to where their bottom line.
And that was the impetus for increasing it by the twenty-five thousand.
Yes, we haven't changed that. Yeah.
Okay.
Just making sure you all know.
Okay.
I think you need to say that again.
We weren't able to hire within the existing salary range for the advertised post. The, the, the candidate that we were most interested in was significantly above that. And so the impetus for including the additional twenty-five thousand is so we could attract the appropriate candidate.
Okay.
Everybody got that?
Understood. Alright, let's get ready to vote. Alright, so. All those in favor. Of reducing. The sustainability management program cost budget by forty thousand dollars. Raise your hands. We're doing the program costs, okay? Alright, I got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay. Now. Next item. All those in favor of reducing the sustainability manager's salary and fringe by twenty-five thousand dollars. Raise your hand. Alright, one, two, three, four, five, six. Alright, so I moved. You took away your vote. Okay, so we are five, uh, five on the second. Um, seven on the first. Okay. Y'all just bear with me, we're almost there. Alright, so. Next item, I'm just trying to check to see where we are. We are at five-ten in terms of expenditures. Keeping in mind that we added, um, some revenues. Alright. So, I'm just trying to make sure I am keeping track of where we are. Um, eight, seven, seven. And then we have, we added about ninety thousand dollars in revenues. Okay, alright. So now, let's talk about the economic.
Uh, so where are we?
We are now in the HCD section.
I'm sorry, the, the general revenue, the one, general fund one.
We're at the, um, ex- uh, change in expenditures is now at five hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and twelve.
Okay.
But it's not gonna be, I believe it's six hundred and forty-seven, nine hundred and fifty-seven. I'm sorry, I'm, I know that's not what this is reflecting, but sorry, just.
Are you including the revenue, the tree fund revenues?
Yes.
Okay, that's, this isn't including the tree fund revenue. Yep, yep. And, um, Director Chung, can you scroll over? Um, do we have the, uh, the tax rate calculation off, off to the side or no?
No, that was, uh, actually.
Okay, alright.
I showed that five fifty-eight, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand would be two cents off, which means we're a hundred thousand above that. That's good. Good news, but. Just, just saying.
Alright, let's keep moving, cuz we still got money to find. Alright, so, um, the economic development specialist. Um, we have two proposals on the table. There's one to eliminate the economic development specialist, and the other is to add a economic development intern. One of the things that I want to make sure that folks fully understand is that we are not talking about necessarily, um. Increasing FTE. What is being proposed is to repurpose. What was a, um, a, a neighborhood services position. And move it into, um, uh, economic development specialist. Now, I recognize that there is a, a, uh, salary differential there. Um, but we're not adding an FTE per se. Um, and again, I can't stress enough how I think this is, right. I, I think it's really important for us, a- again, in the long term, in our long-term revenues. To make sure that we have a commitment to development. Um, so Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, uh, voice my support of having the. Um, economic development person and, um, keeping that in our budget. I think it is important, as you said. I think we have a, a great, uh, a lot of great opportunities for development in Tacoma Park. Um, especially in the, uh, uh, Ward Six area and, and along, may, uh. At New Hampshire Avenue, uh, and then other, uh, opportunities, especially with the. Uh, small businesses that, uh, are new and upcoming. This is something that, uh, past councils, uh, fought long and hard to get into the budget. And we're just starting to, uh, uh, have just started to do some work in this area. I think, um. Uh, Mr. Cowler is, uh, is a, a good person and, and well-labeled. I think um, uh, Mr. Cowler is uh, is a, a good person and, and well labeled to uh, lead this uh, in his new temporary position, so I, uh, I strongly support this, keeping this in the budget.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Gibson?
I don't know, we're, we're, we're talking about pluses and minuses. I, I, I um, am um, supporting the decreased Dibala and Hanzek. Uh, I think, I, I guess I would support an intern. I there's a lot of economic development work going on in the state and the, and the county in terms of the, the New Hampshire Avenue and Purple Lines. And I, my, my sense is that we can tag along, rather than trying to lead, tag along and build on, on their, uh, their work. I am of, I, I guess I'm a little bit skeptical of the development bonanza coming to Tacoma Park. Uh, it's so, I, I, but I would support our, our staying in the game, but not investing in FTE, in, in, another FTE into it.
Councilmember Hanzek?
Yeah, since I was one of the people who had considered this item and thought maybe an intern might be adequate. Uh, I had some further, deeper conversations with uh, various staff across different departments, including our city manager. Um, and I actually believe we should have a full, a full economic specialist at the salary that was proposed. Uh, first of all, as I have stated previously, I, I do have the distinct impression based on what I've been watching so far that we are likely to stay in the status quo situation of management for at least six months. Economic development is absolutely critical at this moment and juncture, particularly uh, in some of our neighborhoods. And there are some specific projects that were explained to me that are potentially in the works. Um, including, including where the minor master plan is taking place, including, you know, around the Purple Line area where potentially, who knows what partnerships, but uh, there's, there are some things under discussion. And there's a, I think at least one building potentially in Ward Six that might also be under discussion. And if there are not human bodies that have the sophistication to have those discussions, then we have no hope of um, increasing our tax base or the economic development that I think is absolutely essential to the future of the city.
Councilmember Smith?
Um, I just, I, I wanted to say about this in particular. Um, I am I think that I am still with uh, the uh, Dibala-Hanzak proposal um, up to this point for the um, intern and not the specialist. And the reason why I'm saying that now is not because I, it's hard on my mind, but I want to have my mind changed. Um, candidly, the on-the-ground realities associated with economic development, particularly in Ward Six, or particularly around the crossroads, are well provided for by um, by the Crossroads Development Association and Kayla Di La Puente. She is a good at her job. In addition to that, there are some, also some hardcore realities about the supply and demand issues associated with increasing interest in this area as far as development of additional revenue. Um, I am, I still don't understand what the, what the value is in adding an additional FTE or person here is. I would like to be made comfortable with it so that I can feel better about it. But on, with regard to the full capacity occupancy at both of the shopping centers that are in our area, or in Ward Six. And the advocacy that has uh, that Kayla has been putting down for the Purple Line Corridor and candidly, the lack of uh, respect that the Purple Line people have been giving to any of the actors who are um, concerned about what's happening there. Um, I don't see where the additional value and lift here is. And if somebody can make me feel that way, I am comfortable.
I'm happy to do that. Um, during the public hearing, Kaylee actually came and advocated on behalf of us funding this position. Um, it is important to keep in mind that the um, the Crossroads um, Development Authority consists of one person and a part-time admin. That is all. It is Kaylee. She's a one-person shop. So it is Kaylee, and then it is, and she's had quite a bit of turnover in terms of her admin staff. Um, she is responsible for a lot and relies heavily on the city of Tacoma Park to help with not only um, business outreach, um, with lobbying, with working to get necessary approvals and attentions and access to resources. Um, so, so I, I would not uh, assume that um, our uh, development authorities, OTVA, or the CDA, um, don't need the help. They are very bare bones. There are hundreds of businesses in the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads area. Many do not speak, are, are, are uh, English. I'm hard, lots of languages spoken, outreach is very difficult. And so to assume that a single person without the support, proper support from the city of Tacoma Park can single-handedly be responsible for ensuring that that area of our city is being properly managed, is unheard of. And then we still have a number of businesses along New Hampshire Avenue, along Maple Avenue, and the like that have no Kaylee. And so when you are talking about what is it that this position will do? We only have our Economic Development Manager. Let's, let's take Ira out of it. He's awesome. But we have an Economic Development Manager and an Economic Development Manager. One person that is supposed to help build the economic engine of our entire city. And so when we are talking about all of the different things we have going on right now. We have NDC, we have the hospital, we have Purple Line. We have, I mean, I could go on and on and on about the number of properties that we need to figure out and work with people to develop. And we are putting all of that on a single individual. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Small, I uh, I really respect your, your knowledge and your uh, passion on uh, working here on the council and on, and on the budget issues. Um, and I, I really have uh, respect too for the Crossroads Development Authority and also, also the old Tacoma Business Association. I think they've done uh, a really good job, as you said, in keeping storefronts occupied, which is a, a key issue, uh, economic development. But what I see is uh, with the Purple Line is we need a whole lot more than that. We need uh, the city to come up with a vision for that area and, and not just that area, but other uh, areas in Tacoma Park. And also a um, a thorough plan for reaching out to the uh, developers and the other types of businesses. Um, and I, I don't see that being something that uh, the um, the Development Authority or the Business Association uh, can do with the staffing that they have. I um, I think uh, it's important to uh, for the city as we think about future budgets to do our best to, to increase our revenues and, and have a uh, a real professional economic development uh, staff. And we're talking about one person, uh, which is probably not adequate. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember. Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you. So so I have been looking at this as Councilmember Hanzek was, as an opportunity to reduce an FTE without a lot of pain. Um, but I will say um, that I don't think it's realistic to, to, to lean on the state and think we're gonna get the services without the, there being people to go after the, go after the work. It's a similar logic to um, to the sustainability. You need the person to do the work in order to get the resources to come into the city. So, um, so I just wanted to say that, that I see the workload. It, it's, in, in that, that's not why I put it on the list in the first place.
Uh, Councilmember Small?
Yeah, I just wanted to say about um, this premise that if if it is true that we need to do these things with regard to economic development, and if it's true that we are currently in a position where we have lateral or vertical up um, to the people in this department, um, and we are currently like, I, I just need to understand the way we're talking about this, because if we're down a staffer, because it is so inconceivable that someone would be able to transfer work between positions, that's one thing. But if the issue is um, whether or not this position is going to add in the effectiveness, the specific effectiveness on the Purple Line or development around the Purple Line or down the New Hampshire Corridor, I am skeptical because if that were possible, or if that were going to happen, or if State Highway was going to commit to it on one side, or if the Purple Line was suddenly gonna be miraculously accountable to any of the, the agents, including Delegate Charcutian, then maybe some of these things would happen. But if this doesn't shake loose, then we have a person just sitting there trying to get meetings that they're not going to get.
So I want us to not conflate issues. Purple Line, Transportation, Public Works matters in terms of the train, the infrastructure, the like. What we have been doing in terms of the Purple Line and how it has impacted businesses has been our HCD Department working with Kaylee, working with uh, OTVA and others to, uh, Kaylee in particular. And what we did during the heart of the pandemic and during the heart of the Purple Line debacle with restricting access to businesses was uh, the Economic Development Manager at the time, Samira Cook Gaines, we did tons of tours. We actually went around and had a whole press conference. Samira made sure, and, and Ira as well, they make sure to put those businesses in front of folks like Lori and ended up with a huge amount of grant monies to go to businesses that have been negatively impacted by the Purple Line.
So then, what you were saying then is that we, that we had two people in this job and now we have one?
We had one. And so, and Samira left, and then we got Ira.
Ira came.
Yep.
And so in theory, the job was relatively well performed under high s- stress circumstances by one actor.
No, Samira had, it was, she was by herself. She, we approved an intern, she then lost said intern. And what has always been said is that having an intern is not enough. Because once you get someone in, they're out. So you need someone else. Someone has to go around touching these businesses. Someone has to also be able to advocate, write up testimony, go to, go to Rockville and talk to the county around projects and things. So it, a- at a minimum, it's a two-person job.
I believe that it is important to you. And um, I believe that if you feel strongly about it's the effectiveness of the person that you were going to be able to put in this position, then I um, will withdraw any hesitations that I have, because I don't have, my name isn't even on this one. Um, but I would say explicitly that given the fact that some of these things have been on the list for ages and there have been any number of opportunities for anybody to take these on and make them effective, and they haven't happened. Um, there's gotta be s- some sort, if, if, if you think that you can find a magic person, then have at it.
Councilmember Siemens?
I believe, oh, okay, I, yeah, I was just gonna say that uh, it might be appropriate to uh, have a discussion of the economic development after the budget process is over, so that we can make sure that uh, we're um, offering the proper motivation and goals.
Okay, so I think we may be ready to vote. Uh, so the first vote is to eliminate the Economic Development Specialist from the budget for HCD. Um, those in favor of eliminating the Economic Development Specialist?
I'm sorry, ca- I, could you remove, I'm, I, I, I have changed my mind as of, yes, and I'm sorry, I just realized that won't look, that will be confusing later. Uh, could you just go ahead and remove my name from it? It was one of those things we were considering and I had, I have changed, properly changed my mind, so you can remove my name from both of them.
Okay. All right. All right, let's do a hand vote. All those in favor of elimination of the Economic Development Specialist position, raise your hand. All right, we got two. Uh, where's the third? So Jason, okay, we got three. Um.
More because we don't have four, so.
All right.
I'm registered in mine.
All right. Um, all of those in favor of in-
So that did not.
So that did not pass?
So we, that means we would hire. So it's been the question is, do we also want a new intern?
Yep, that's the next one. All right, so the next item on the table, all those in favor of voting um, for adding an Economic uh, Development Intern to HCD?
In addition to.
In addition to the specialist.
Which was not my intent.
Yeah, but no.
Yep, but we can vote it. Uh, all those in favor of adding that intern, raise your hand. All right, so the intern is a no. All right. All right, so. Okay, so now we are almost, almost there. Okay, so our total is at uh, four forty-seven, three ninety-nine. Yes, no worries. Okay, um, next item, there's two um, budget additions. One is to increase the budget by eighty-one thousand for a full-time grants coordinator. Councilmember Small?
Um, yes, uh.
Sorry, Mayor, I, I put this in with regard to um, the uh, staffing on grants, because given the statements that we've heard about the need for grant coordinator in Public Works and the need for grant coordinator in HCD, um, it's my argument that the actual um, writing of grants is a technical skill and it is supplanted um, and supported by technical assistance from whichever sort of subject matter experts you need. And so that um, that job could be done by one person um, who is ever-present and constantly searching for available grants um, with technical assistance and support. And so my understanding here is if we did this, then we would be able to remove the um, proposals for grant writer in HCD and in Public Works. Cuz there would only be one, so we'd only be adding one FTE theoretically.
To be clear, there's, there's an existing grant coordinator in HCD. Um, and so, are you, are you saying that we remove that person, Councilmember?
I would, or if my understanding was that that position was unfilled. Is that position currently filled?
It is, I guess it will be vacant uh, probably next week.
Okay.
Really? Oh, okay, didn't know that.
And then what's the salary range for that?
So I can't.
Under that premise, it would seem to me that the best way to augment both departments would be to have one person who is dedicated to the procurement of grants that are either police grants or public works grants or HCD grants. Because if you had a person who was always looking for those things and I believe from my own personal experience, that you can get a lot more done. Because then you're just adding the technical assistance, information that you need at any given point. But then you have a narrative structure and an effective advocate for grants. So yes, that's my proposal.
I just, if I'm, I just want-
Councilmember Gibson?
Could compare the uh, the salary range between these three different positions.
These three different positions, right? You're you're suggesting losing two um combining them, so I see what this one asks for eighty-one thousand. The current position or the the position that's gonna be vacated next week, how much uh is, how much is that position's?
That position is part-time and uh uh. Director Cowler, do you know exactly what that salary is?
Yeah, I apologize, I wasn't uh prepared for that question if you give me a few minutes here, I I should have it.
Okay, and just while we wait, um, right, Councilmember Gibson, this eighty-one thousand dollars is a combination of both salary and fringe.
Yep.
And so the the salary portion is fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so I I it's eighty-one thousand, I guess, is the more important number compared to what. Ira is gonna pull together, and then the the third, the other. Um. Grant court, grant writer is in which department?
There's only one right now, and it's in HCD. And it and.
And my my premise is that we could augment all three departments if we had a uh dedicated staffer. Um, insofar as the Police Department, Public Works, and HCD could all be augmented by the opportunity of someone who is going directly after grants constantly.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Mayor, mayor.
Uh, yeah, oh.
Councilmember Hansak?
Uh, I just want to ask um our acting deputy city manager and also our director of public works. Because this is not only a question of budget, this is a structural question that's actually being proposed here, your thoughts, please?
I'll instead of me responding, I'll I'll leave it up to Director Braithwaite and and Director Cowler to respond.
Uh, it's a bit of a two sides of the hand for me, um. I've always thought the city needed a grants coordinator, we did years ago have one, it was very effective, um. The bigger challenge for us now, in addition to having somebody that could focus on grants, is we then have to administer. Oversee and implement those grants, and so the grant coordinator can bring the money in, but then it's gotta go somewhere. To hand off, um, one of the things that works collaboratively between Public Works and HCD is they get the grants to do certain development projects. Certain design and planning projects, and then they hand it over to us to implement. So we sort of can share, share the labor that way. Um, that being said, I mean, I do think, uh, you know, the city should. Consider and could very much use a a dedicated grants person to generate funds for the city. Um. And when we do that, we we need to look at implementation um and how we'll put those dollars to use, cause once. Getting the grant is one hurdle and then um spending it, reporting on it, depending on what type of grant, if it's federal grant. Ungodly amounts of paperwork and reporting, um.
Can I just follow up though, because it you hadn't proposed it in in this budget and you know, there are a million things you could have proposed, but uh. I mean, you proposed other things for the moment, so I mean, maybe it's just new food for a thought, but. Is there a reason that you wouldn't have proposed this or seeing the cuts that you're seeing now? Would you rather see it, rather not see it for any reason?
Uh, I I've always, well, in in the past few years, adding staff has been like a. No zone, no-go zone, so uh it's not been something that we've been supported in and uh doing, we we've certainly had a need. Um, I think our um organizational study uh pointed to staffing needs, so there there are significant staffing needs in the city.
And I think if we if we had the option to choose. Where staff would be, we 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 wouldn't have placed uh a new staff member in in a grant writing department. I think there are higher priorities, uh which I think is what Director Braithwaite is alluding to. Um, but Director Raifway, could you also talk a little bit about how? Um, I guess particularly this sustainability division has sought grants in the past?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's it's been uh in each of our jobs to sort of try to look for grants and identify them, particularly when they're in line with projects that we're we're currently doing, some. Some avenues are easier than that than others, we're currently pursuing an urban forest grant uh through our partnership with Casey Trees. We pursued a small sustainability grant in our vegetation maintenance division. So each of the supervisors, um, you know, does try to work on grants as they can. Um, it's it's a difficult, um, you know, it's difficulty. I think we were most successful at Public Works when we had a special projects coordinator, whose job it was to get grants and oversee and administer them, um, so. Anyway.
And just as a reminder, the special projects coordinator is still in the list of. Uh vacant positions.
Well, that's a different special project.
Yeah.
In each in in Public Works, the special projects coordinator was uh.
Became the deputy.
Deputy, deputy director.
Okay, okay, okay. Uh, Councilmember Fulcher?
Um, so I thought that there was a a grants. Position on the list of unfilled positions.
That's the grants coordinator, that's the part-time position in HCD.
Okay. And do you think that this salary seems right for the full-time grant coordinator?
Uh, I I think it's low, but I I would really have to defer to a HR director, Lori, are you with us?
And is it?
I.
Where did it go?
I am, I do, I would agree that um. I would think that salary is a little bit on the low end for a full-time position.
And again, the the full-time position is eighty-one plus the fringe.
It's it's eighty-one minus the fringe, so the salary for that position is fifty thousand as as proposed right now.
Okay, so this is the additional fringe, and so that's why it's confusing to me.
Yeah, I I don't necessarily care if we do it with fringe or not, or if you just did a hard fifty and we got somebody to have a contract for a year to write grants for the for the city. I don't care. I think the issue is that um if we're talking about the opportunity of adding a staff person that's going to increase the amount of revenue available for projects and programs. It would seem like that would be a good idea. If we're losing that person in HCD and it's possible for that person to augment all three departments. If uh they are receiving the technical assistance from subpoena senior staff as articulated by Darryl, it would seem like it would make sense. So if you don't wanna do it, that's fine, but that's my proposal.
The the only change that I would make is if if that's the direction that we had that we um reconsidered reconsider the salary. Uh, so I just, I I don't know what that number is. Um, but but I I I I think as proposed, you know, with a focus on. HCD and public work specifically, there there's already a lot of synergy there. Uh, I could see a position with that with that focus being being a value add. Um.
Is it going to combine part-time and this to make a? Yeah. To make a salary?
I think so, Ira, were you gonna give us some salary info?
Yeah, could, well, I, first of all, I think that um I believe the seller number, which again, because it's part-time at the moment, doesn't include fringes around thirty-five. If my numbers are correct, uh but uh I don't know if if Lori.
So the, so the current part-time person, say that again, please?
Lori, do you wanna provide any clarification or?
Yeah.
You go on here.
Yeah, the 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 current part-time person salary currently is around thirty-five thousand.
Um.
It's probably a little bit more.
No, that's just the salary.
Okay, so thirty-five.
Part-time and that part-time is twenty, uh, how many hours, forty hours?
Twenty hours a week.
Twenty hours a week, forty hours every two.
But they do get fringe benefits too, so it's a twenty.
But the number that she quoted does not include.
Right, so I'm just kinda guessing that it.
So salary will be about seventy thousand dollars if you just double it.
Yeah, um.
It sounds about right.
I I have a. I have a, ma, is it my turn?
Mm-hmm.
Is, I have a question, so if perhaps you didn't anticipate. That your position, your part-time position would be vacant. And so now it is. And is there any benefit in thinking about whether that should be a full-time position? And even if it is an HCD, loaning the services to some other. Folks in the city while while they're at it.
Sure, of course, on two departments, I I think definitely, I I think it it could be a full-time position, um, but again, I'll defer to Director Braithwaite and Director Cowler.
Yeah, could, could I just interject with just a few caveats here, uh, just just for consideration of what the current position uh does and how that might be impacted? Um, so so just real quickly, the the current position uh is a part-time position, I I just wanna note, I think uh. Two things, one factual, one maybe observational. The factual piece is uh as currently situated within HCD, the expectation of that grant coordinator position. Is it is uh external grants, but also management of a good amount of our internal grants. So next week you will be uh hearing from the Grants Review Committee um on our Quality of Life Grant, that entire process, the Grants Review Committee, as well as. Uh, the grant itself and grant management is managed by the Grant Coordinator position. Um, so so just wanna add that caveat that there's also internal grant management. Um, that we've been ramping up as well as as part of the position within HCD. Um, a- and then maybe just the other observational point is, you know, certainly I think having someone um. Managing the grant application and grant timeline period i- is really great as a line-level staff, um. You know, it still does require a fair amount of time from the um. Let's say staff e- experts, um, uh, when you are submitting that grant, I don't think it's quite as simple as just um, just from my personal experience of just handing over. You know, the entire process over to a grant coordinator, so just wanted to kind of point that out for.
I was not, um, this, um. I don't think it would be appropriate to assume that that's what I um meant. Um, my argument would be that um if you have a person who is writing grants. That has some familiarity or technical assistance in either of the areas or the synergy in these areas. That over time, you are actually developing a cadre of or. Of information relevant to subject matter grants in a variety of areas. And but thereby doing, you've streamlined the opportunity of increasing a professional staff. And augmenting those staffers in their attempt at trying to increase the revenue of this city. Um, and I am more willing to consider someone attempting to get a bunch of grants. For us to attempt to administer than I am just the prospect of randomly generating revenue in the streets. So this seems like a good idea to me.
Can can I um?
Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah.
And and I, it is eleven forty-eight.
Yes.
Um, just to remind folks, we have two vote items still in the general fund before we need to move over to ARPA. One is a vote on the grants. Um, uh, position. And the other is the proposed um increase in the tax rebate in- incentive. So I would like to ask folks, I see folks with lights on right now. Um, once we go through these lights, I need to be able to call a vote on this grants um grants manager or coordinator position. Councilmember DeBala?
Okay, I I am working on a concept, bear with me, cause this actually was not something I had. Realized was on the list tonight, or I would have done this already. But if we have a part-time grants coordinator vacant. And we have a need in the short run for part-time grants work to support a cup other depart- another department. It seems as if we might combine them and it seems as if we might use. For the first year, ARPA money to supplement the um grants, the the fir- the the part-time position. Um, so I think I'm suggesting a second option. Which is rather than a full-time grant coordinator out of the general fund that we consider. Part or all of a grant coordinator out of ARPA to complement. A position, a half a position that we already have in the FTS, am I making any sense?
Are you saying that you would make a full-time position funded by two different sources?
Is that possible? Yes.
Uh, it's, we do it in other places, yeah, it would be possible.
Okay, so are we, so I'm gonna suggest that.
The the only, the the caveat, the qualification there is that, of course, ARPA is temporary.
Yes, yes.
So we would be effectively calling this a temporary job or or we would be saying that at some point in the future that we'd be funder it, funding it from the general fund.
Yeah, and given that it's eleven fifty tonight, I'm not sure I have an answer for that yet as a suggestion. I'm just thinking about another way to do this that might not be creating a new position.
Okay.
Out of the general fund.
Can we, can we pause this conversation?
Yeah.
Um, because there are still items that we need to get through.
Okay.
So and we're very close to getting through all of our our markups.
Yeah.
So, um, really quickly, I just wanna confirm. That in terms of the uh the rec bus. Um. Just confirming that there was a proposed decrease in the recreation, um, the large recreation bus that Councilmember Siemens and Hansak proposed. Um, which would take a a, the delay would be a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the um ERR. And then we have two. Proposals in the budget um to decrease the small bus in the ERR. And um to replace the large bus with the small bus, and so I'm trying to make sure that this. Um, piece is is clear in terms of the delays. Can can we hold off on questions, cause this is related to the ERR and it's not gonna impact the tax rate, so.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, I thought, that's cool with me, I just, they were yelling about the buses today, so I wanted to make sure I asked.
Yeah, so what is being proposed is two things. We have the large bus. Being, the purchase of the large bus being delayed. Then it looks like there is two small bus-related items. One is to delay, and then one is to replace the large bus with a small bus with a lift. So I am trying to make sure that what we have accounted for here is is accurate so that we can move forward with the vote. Okay. Um, though. Yes.
So we're saying.
Yeah.
Get rid of, get rid of the large bus.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and replace it with a small bus with a lift.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then not replace the s- the other small bus that we already have. And we came to this uh suggestion after talking with the uh uh Rec Department Director and staff. And really, let let me just say, I've always been an advocate for the large bus, I thought it was great, it just has not. Turned out to be as useful as we thought it would. Uh. This arrangement allows for the Recreation Department, when they have a large number of people to transport. To transport them with the two smaller vans. Which they don't need to get commercial driver's license uh individual to drive them. They can do it with uh even part-time staff as long as they have the uh defensive driving course behind them. And so this is uh uh something that's gonna be more effectively used. Than what they have done with the large bus regardless of what condition it's in now. Uh, there's other factors involved in this, and that is the 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 uh lift gate. On the large bus is not just uh easy to repair, they can't, uh, we've been told they don't have the parts. They don't manufacture the parts anymore, so it would be a total replacement of the lift gate. But that to me is immaterial, what we really are doing is making a uh saving some money and at the same time making some. Providing the resources that are gonna be used more effectively than what we've had. Even with a working big bus and a working small bus. And just one last thing, and I and I don't know the answer to it, uh, but. Uh, it seems to me that there is more money involved than what's shown on this because. Uh, there is with a low uh mileage large bus, there is value to that. That's gonna be brought back into the city when it's sold.
Okay, so I think um unless there's any objections, we're ready for a vote on this item, so.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm still don't understand.
So something's gotta go.
There's three different proposals here.
All three of those, if I understand correctly, would have to stay if the proposal from Councilmember Siemens and Hansak is is.
Correct.
Being considered.
Correct, so the.
Oh, this is an ad, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Yep, so we're saying cut the budget for the large bus.
Add the small bus.
Add a small bus and then delay the current small bus for a year.
I'm good with that, thank you.
We're only gonna have small buses.
And 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 just, I think the question that. President's asked is just fix the lift, well, that's not an option. Yeah, got it, yeah.
Even if it was, like, we don't have anybody to drive the CDL, the bus that required the CDL.
I also, I wanna be really clear, it took an hour and a half to solve all the questions we had about this, an hour and a half just about the buses. And asking everything under the sun. Thank you, Terry, thank you, staff, no, but I'm, I mean, and I'm not, I'm not saying just trust me here, but but uh the what what became very clear because Terry and I both came in thinking. A, we need the. A, we need the large bus, it's not really needed to be replaced. And the CDL license that the city had paid for to get somebody licensed was a solution. It wasn't a solution, that's the bottom line. It was much more complex than that. It has to do with staffing and where people go and what else. They also use MCPS buses usually when they have a larger group and that's a critical key. It's a very important thing to have in back of mind when you're thinking about how they put it all together.
Mm-hmm.
It was, it, it's just been a few years, I guess, since council's been able to revisit this. It probably would have been revisited during the pandemic. Had it, had it not come up now, that it, that the solutions were off.
If Ward five agrees with it, it's good.
It's good. Alright, so councilmember Gibson, do you have a question about this?
Oh, no I don't.
Alright, let's get ready to vote. Alright, all those, this is gonna be a, a, can we do it all as a package? Just to make life a little easier. Alright, all those in favor of the following three budget amendments. Elimination of the large bus from the E R, ER purchasing a small bus from the ER. And delaying the purchase of a small bus in the ER. All those in favor? Okay, got the counts. Turn this blue. Alright, trash trucks. Um, councilmember Hansak retracted, councilmember Gibson, it looks like you are proposing a delay of one year. Okay, alright, all those in favor of. Delaying the purchase of the trash truck by one year from the ER. Okay.
Sure. I've done that in airports. You have to do what you have to do.
Alright, all those in favor? All those in favor of, of delaying for one year the trash truck in the ER. Raise your hands. We got one, two, three. Alright, so it, it does not move. Alright. Police vehicles. Alright, we're dealing with now um item um with Hansak and Gibson. Delay for one year, the per- um, the uh purchase of two police vehicles.
Sorry, mayor, I have to ask a question because I may have missed it. I don't know if the questions I ca- I had asked, I'm looking at the city manager because I don't know that the chief is online at this hour. Uh, was there anything else to tell me? I had specific, I believe I had specifically asked, and I'm sorry if you did write it up because a lot of things came in like an hour before. Uh, about what the specific impact on the police force would be. Uh, if there were any union agreements that were going to be violated or anything else. Uh, with the two vehicles versus the one vehicle. Uh, we know if there was a one, that it, mine had originally said one to two, but it's, it's fine. Yeah.
I don't, chief is not available anymore.
That's okay.
So I do not have.
He verbally seemed, if, if I'm looking at everyone, it was my impression yesterday as he saw we were making cuts left and right. It was my verbal quick impression that he seemed to feel somewhat comfortable with this level of impact on. His fleet.
Two out of seven.
Right.
I think.
And I'm sorry, that feels really superficial understanding. That's why I had asked for a little bit more specificity, but.
Well, I can also say that when, when you delay a, a vehicle, vehicles like this, i- you do then. Impact the future years. So, you know, we have this planning process where we assume eight years for each vehicle. If we're gonna arbitrarily delay two, then that means one of those years where we thought we were gonna buy five, we're gonna have to buy seven. So it's gonna show up again in an out year because we're gonna have to in- increase the amount of replacement. So. It's one of those things where you're just kind of moving them around on the board. Um. I, I think that they'll likely not have a problem with vehicles. It just means that vehicles that were intended to be delayed um. Deadline will be in service. Um. And uh, and there will be a future impact. Uh, where we'll have to buy more vehicles than we intended to because of these delays.
And I think the, the only thing I'll add is that they, I think chief is, 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 has made the statement before that. Um, one vehicle from this FY has already been pushed out. Um, and as we all know, right now, the vehicles that are being proposed are within our current policies. Um, and so we're, we're operating within the boundaries that we have. Um, I think that's the only thing that chief would probably add to this discussion.
And uh, for what it's worth, uh, this will not impact the tax rate.
Right, all of these ER are expenditures, that's true. Well, it does, but not, we're just making the point that it doesn't affect this coming year's tax rate.
Alright, so I see no more lights. Let's get ready to vote. Um, item on the table is to delay by one year. The purchase of two police vehicles from the ER. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Alright, it moves. Alright, next item. Decrease in the roll-off trailer. Councilmember Hansak, delay that one year.
Yep, that's what I laid on the table. Um. Looking at Director Braithwaite, I know that it is, it is. Ready, your mechanics have assessed that it is ready to, and as per our policies, it would be time. In fact, I think you said it was delayed. Is that right? Um, uh, at the same time, my rationale here is it's a large ticket item. I do thi- I think with all of these ER replacements, it is our job as council is our ethical responsibility that we put on. Soon on the table, a discussion around the ER and how we calculate vehicle. Uh, you know, replacement. Uh, we aren't doing our due diligence and I don't want to put any of you in that position. Um, but I hope that each one of these delays by one year will improve our fiscal standing over the long haul and that is. Thereby, I think this one will not have. Uh, based on my, my dialogue with Director Braithwaite, I, I, it sounds like it might. Be able to last and even if it doesn't, it's used about once a month. And um, and it uh could potentially. There, there are other ways, there are workarounds if it should actually break down. They're not ideal workarounds, but for example, two or three trucks could be used for a single haul that would happen just one singular time in a month and ideally it won't. Necessarily break down. Um, it might be able to last another year because, because it has been somewhat minimally used. Um, over the years, even if it's not in terrific shape, obviously. It's about thirteen years old. Um, so it, it gets used once a month.
And so this, this would be in contrast to say the trash truck which already has broken down.
Yes, yes, and the trash truck, why, why I moved from, basically I moved, if you noticed, from. Uh, supporting the trash truck to this one and, and the reason here is because. You know, I thought about, especially as I learned about the usage of this one, you know, trash trucks are used like very intensely by any city, but definitely by our city. For everything you can imagine every single day of the week. Uh, that is not the case with this particular trailer. So I, I feel like um, that's not a place where you wanna necessarily have to borrow, rent or have it break down. It's. That would be really not, not a nice thing for a city. So um, I felt, I felt like this was a more responsible and um sensible cut to the, to the ER.
Okay. Alright, let's get ready to vote. Real quick, uh, Director Braithwaite, um, negative impact associated with the delay of this one.
Uh, yeah, I don't have heartburn. Not my preference, but I can live.
Alright, thank you so much. Let's get ready to vote. Um, a one-year de- one-yeard.
Down there on the floor. One-year delay.
One-year delay ER for the roll-off trailer. All those in favor? Alright, uh.
I just did.
How, wait, I wanted to make sure we got the counts. I think I was okay with this one. It, it was all seven, alright.
All seven?
Yep.
Okay. Where the um. Vehicles was funded too, right?
Yep. Alright. The uh, do, 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 third floor renovation.
Does any of that come out of the uh, like cable funding or anything like that? Okay.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-five is out of this, a special revenue fund, the cable fund and uh twenty-five out of the uh facility maintenance reserve.
Totally close to, I have one question.
Seventy-five out of the facility maintenance reserve.
Yeah, it's only twenty-five K from general, the rest comes from cable funds and just as a reminder.
None, none from general.
None from general, so this is all cable grant funds.
Uh, one, uh, one seventy-five from the, one twenty-five from the cable grant and seventy-five from the facility maintenance reserve.
Okay, so I just want to remind folks that the cable grant funds have extremely limited uses.
Yep.
And so you can only use them for aspects related to tech. Uh, tech uh thesis, okay.
So, I have one question. So I'm mindful that this is a major improvement. If, him, in the facilities for our workers in this department. I've asked if there are any cheaper arrangements like panel, temporary panels or whatever and there's not a good solution that's cheaper. My question is, um. Could, timing of the different construction pieces going on in the building. Will we be able to do this in fiscal twenty-four, given the other two projects? That's our assumption. Again, it's lots of moving targets because we don't know what's gonna be finally end up on the budget. So, once, once everything settles, then we put our schedule together.
Well, we know, we know, we're renov-
Yeah, we imagine we'll be doing this primarily in-house. Oh, okay, so we're, so we're renovating the library. By, by contract. And the atrium by contract, this would be building walls and putting indoors and. And that could be done when the other stuff is going on because it's being done in-house. Okay, that's something I didn't know, thank you.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Just trying to completely understand. It's one twenty-five K from the special revenue fund, but that's specifically the cable part of that fund. And if we don't spend the seventy-five, we're probably not gonna be able to spend that one twenty-five either, right? We need to spend them together, okay?
Right. Right, because there's those subsidies, another way to do it.
Nope. Alright, let's get ready to vote.
Let's vote.
All those in favor of reducing the third floor renovation budget? Just as a reminder, which consists of cable grant dollars, there's no general fund dollars. Um, as well as funds from the um facilities maintenance reserve by seventy-five thousand dollars. All those in favor? Alright, doesn't pass. You all don't realize how close we are to being done. So. I, that is how I motivate everyone to like keep pushing. We have, we have three more big areas to cover, three items to cover. Yep, let's, can we keep the grant, full-time grant coordinator discussion short? Because I'm ready to vote. Um, the full-time grant coordinator position, we're going back to that.
Are we allowed to ask where we stand on the tax rate at this point?
Let's see. Yes, let's see, let me make sure I'm doing the math right.
While you're doing the math, um. Is there any appetite for adding an alternative which would be to?
No, that was yesterday, you can't do that today.
I would like to say, I will draw my number if we're not still in the proper contact rate.
But I, uh, your number of increasing a full-time grant coordinator doesn't. Take away the salary of that part-time person. So like it's, you're not actually asking for a full eighty-one thousand. Yeah.
What? Say that again?
You're asking for a forty-six thousand dollar addition if you keep the seller, yes, increase.
Mm-hmm. So you're asking to increase the part-time person to a full-time person?
Yep.
Councilmember Small?
That sounds hard to me.
Okay, so that, alright, that reduces that. Y'all are brokering, broker inside deals, okay.
I just, um, I just want to say that the sustainability director also um has, has and will continue to do grant. Grant writing that affects po- that affects po- uh, public works, so.
And I would imagine that there, there is a synergy with regard to technical systems, that's the. If this person has to be um, a technical expert facing an outward in it, then it just augments that.
I guess I, fine, I just thought that the, the position with the sustainable director would do a lot of grants writing her, him or herself.
Yes, I think that's probably right.
Alright.
Um, can I?
Alright, alright, so let's do a quick pause. Timeout. Where we are right now, not accounting for the new revenues that have been transferred in terms of the tree fund. Only looking at the reductions in expenditures for the general fund. Keeping in mind that each cent of the tax rate equals two hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Currently where we are is about a one point six percent, um, one point six cent uh decrease in the tax rate. So I'm just giving folks a quick check-in.
And if you lay it in the ninety-seven. Forty-two thousand. Increase.
Yes, I did not take that into account.
Mm-hmm, so then they, then you're going down and essentially you're going down.
But let's, let's, let's hold off until we see what our reserves look like, okay? Now. Now, let's go back to the grants. Okay, because there's a, a item on the floor, okay?
I would like to suggest that that number be changed to reflect adding the, making this, making it an existing position. That's part-time, making it full-time so that this number would be lower presumably.
That number would need to be higher.
Pardon?
That number would need to be higher. So the grants, the, the part-time grant coordinator is about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
If we were making it full-time, uh, staff suggestion is to double that.
Right. But this reflects one additional person?
Are you keeping me?
That's what I'm not clear on, and then I just, um, one last comment. I still think we could use ARPA money for half of it if we wanted to, but.
Okay, so I want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear on the math. Because I think what is on the table is to um. Double, uh, make those, um, the, the special projects for neuter full-time. And that would mean um doubling the salary and assuming and whatever. Increase in fringe, because I don't know what that rate is, um, would be. So is it still going to be more than the eighty-one thousand?
I believe the uh grant coordinator, uh, the part-time position right now is already in the budget.
Correct.
Okay, so if we want to have an additional part-time. The total salary in fringe should be lower than eighty-one thousand.
Correct. So, can we quickly, can somebody tell me right now what the um, I don't have.
Eighty-one thousand minus thirty-five thousand is. Oh, what do we, what do we, what number are we working?
The salary should be in the seventy range and then is Lori on? Do we know what the percentage is for fringe? It used to be twenty-eight. I'm guessing it's higher now. Thirty? Thirty.
Yeah. Director Cannon, do you know offhand?
I don't know offhand, um, give me one second.
Fair to just double the part-time fringe, is that?
Right, you're right, you could double the part-time fringe.
So Director Carla, you gave us the part-time fringe already. Can you repeat that?
I di- I did not give you the part-time fringe. Furiously searching, give me one second.
Okay, alright, so while, let's, let's keep on moving. We'll come back to that one. Alright, next item is the interdepartmental tax rebate incentive of seventy thousand dollars. Mm-hmm, interdepartmental.
Right about capital, I wonder next.
Yeah, um, I, I want to keep it in, but um, I, I've since learned that um. Correct me if I'm wrong, um, that, that the um, I, I guess I want to confirm that. When we find out first of October roughly, which or how many um applicants. Eligible applicants have been um identified, if that number is higher. Uh, means a higher number than what we have money for, that we can then. Um, as a council, um, make a amendment to add that additional. um, as a council, um, make a amendment to add that additional amount of money. Is that, so this, this money was intended to make sure that we have enough money to, to meet with an ex- expanded outreach, meet the number of people that are eligible for our property tax credit. So, can we up it, it, at that time in, after the October, this, uh, file comes from the state or county in terms of numbers? If you find the money.
Uh, we can always make a budget amendment, you know, uh, during October time.
Right.
If you feel that, you know, the tax rebate program can be expanded, um, but.
But we have to find that, where that money comes from, that has to come from something. Well, I, I, I guess, I, I, so, again, so I, we can do it, but it has to come from someplace, it has to come out of the general funds.
It's, it's always coming out from the interdepartmental funding, and which is in the nine thousand account. And this particular category is the same applied to the tax rebate money. And, uh, I, I believe two years ago, we have some, some, uh, programs similar. Is also like a tax rebate incentive program, and that additional was about fifty thousand dollars. But it seems like we never use that money.
But Director Chung, um, if, if the money's not budgeted for, and we wanna add new money in the middle of the fiscal year, that money needs to come from unassigned reserve, is that right?
Um, it, it, it based on the need, because the budget amendment is something that we can always change. And update, uh, the available fund, if we needed that, that, that funding at that time.
So you're saying it would be a transfer from some existing program? Or if there's no money available within the existing budget, then we would make a transfer from unassigned reserve via budget amendments?
Uh, it will be coming out from our unassigned reserve.
So this is just an example of how you can, um, magically find yourself halfway or, uh, near the end of your fiscal year budget and you're over budget, because you're doing budget amendments to a budget that you didn't properly budget.
I, 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 I wasn't sure, I, I, I wasn't, yeah, considering, um, the, it's an unknown how many more eligible there will be, so it's a guess, and I gives that guess based on the information from the HCD department. Um, but I'm, I would like to change this down to, to reducing, uh, our, to making it a, rather than a seventy thousand split that thirty-five thousand dollar, uh, um. Yeah, thirty-five, just splitting it.
And Councilmember Gibson, can you talk a little bit about the, the additional outreach that you mentioned, would you?
Yeah, I've spoke, spoken with, uh, Mr. Cowler, um, a- and he, he has agreed that some outreach can take place, that, that there is funds for outreach, in other words. What we are cur- currently doing may not be enough to, to identify all those people that are eligible. And so this, we would need to do some additional outreach. I said that if it comes down to it, after you've done the outreach, the kind of normal outreach, which is uh, uh, the newsletter, the website, um, the, the normal kind of outreach. If in addition to that, you mean door-to-door handing, handing out stuff, I would do that. I would, people in my wards would hand out these to make sure the people, so we're co- talking about a combination of normal outreach and the potential of some extra, uh, flyers at, to, to targeted commu- uh, targeted sections of the, of the community. And, um, anyhow, I just think it's, it's really important for us to reach every single person that's eligible, and that we would do that.
Alright, um, so, council member, looks like Councilmember DeBala.
Yes, I think it's really important to do outreach on the tax credits that are available now. I keep finding people in work, I've been doing this for a couple, for, for several years, and I keep finding people in work too, who still don't know that they're eligible for one thing or another. That, and I would, and I would gladly help with this outreach effort, and I'm sure I can find people in work to, to help with it as well. However, I don't think there's thirty-five thousand dollars worth of people out there. Um, so it's really just a question of whether, I mean, it is an unknown. Um, so, that, yeah, I, I appreciate you putting it out there.
A- and then you say that if, if there's money left over, then that money can be transferred. A little bit more and transfer it back in.
That's right, alright, Councilmember Hansak.
I just wanted to say, I think this would be the most, uh, straightforward thing from ARPA dollars. Should we have extra money, we're talking about some of our lowest, no, and I'm not saying to transfer this now to ARPA dollars, I'm just saying I, I absolutely one hundred percent agree with the spirit, uh, in which this request is made. Uh, I just think if we found ourselves needing to find a source of funding that any, you know, any flexibility thereby in the ARPA funding, this would be a sensible place to put it. I think the onus is on us to do the outreach, I'm hoping, is my understanding that Community Navigator program is still in the budget, and that could be a good use of Community Navigator and the billboards.
Yeah, one-
To mention that too, yeah.
Yeah, one thing that's important to keep in mind is, at least in some of the earlier stages, there were some, some, some interesting language, um, around making sure that municipalities were not using ARPA dollars for the purpose of lowering taxes. So, um, you, so we were limited in, in that, but I want us to get to a vote, cuz it's a twelve twenty-two. Alright, item on the table, uh, is to increase.
Point of order, we're still under one point six if we do this, or not. Or one point six, or a cent and a half.
Let me check my numbers.
Still, we're currently still there, even with that, alright, thank you.
Yep, are we still there? Alright, we're one seven two, alright. Alright, alright, we're voting, okay? The item on the table is to increase the budget by thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, to provide more monies towards the tax rebate incentive around, uh, community engagement and outreach. All those in favor? Raise your hand, raise your hand, raise your hand, alright, one, two, three, four, five, six, oh wait, one, two, three, four, five, five. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, alright. That passes.
Oh, we have to, that's the, uh, grant coordinator is the remainder.
Nice, I have that grant coordinator number if, if it's helpful.
Okay, thank you so much.
Bring home for me.
I believe you're looking at forty-six thousand total in salary and fringe for our current part-time position.
So ninety-two?
Uh, I don't know if it's a one-to-one translation, but, um, that would seem to make sense.
But, but it wouldn't be ninety-two, because there's, uh, half of that salary is already accounted for in the budget. So we're just looking at the differential of turning that person from part-time to full-time.
More money, more money is better.
Reduce to eighty-one to forty-six. May I, may I, so, so the additional that would need to be added, if you delete the entire number off, um, it should be around fifty-two thousand total additional.
Okay.
So it's not a one-to-one Director Cannon, from the part-time to full-time?
It is, but- But, but the, the fringe is, the fringe is around fifteen thousand and some change, so if you do double that and then double the salary, which is thirty-six, the total amount would be the difference of that, that number.
I'd just like to say that according to, uh, Councilmember Hansak, uh, that would put us just under the ideal number. And so I would reduce the salary accordingly, so we could stay at the number, honestly. Like, um, and if, if somehow you can't fill the position, um, then, yeah. But I would rather stay at the number, yeah, we should be able to get a grant to get a grant, and, of a grant.
Um, two things.
What's, what's your number?
The, this, the current level of the coordinator.
Director Braithwaite, can you turn your mic on?
Oh, no, I was just gonna let you talk, um. So two things, the, the level of the coordinator now, we had this discussion earlier. Love the coordinator now is kind of the minimum, if you make it any less, you don't get the kind of person who can do the work, so thirty-five and thirty-five is seventy. Yeah, that sounds about right. Um, and again, is it possible to use ARPA money for the second half of this, knowing that that means that we will have to deal with making this either temporary or full-time, in, you know, at some point in the future?
I would argue that if we can pay for anybody's salaries out of grants, um, as a part of the overhead, this would be worth it. It would pay for itself, like, the, the only position that officially could theoretically pay for itself immediately in this patrol's budget is a good grant writer.
But I wanna make sure that the director, directors of both acting, I, I wanna make sure that the staff are okay with this possibility of merging money.
I, I don't see any challenge in using ARPA dollars, I also don't think we have to solve it tonight. I think you can add it to the budget, and if you wanna make a change as a part of your, uh, ARPA discussion at a later time, I think you can do that.
I think it may affect votes tonight, that's why I'm pushing it.
Can I ask Jason?
Yes.
Jason, so, I understand, you know, I actually did grant writing myself, but, so, in this, in this case, we're talking about um, uh, hiring some that, to do grant writing, you say could pay for themselves, they could pay for themselves, they would pay for us to do additional stuff. But they would not be paying into the general fund.
Oh, no, 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 but in theory, if you're-
Doing more.
Yeah, we could be putting people in positions where part of their salary comes from a grant. Um, as a part of the overhead of a grant, and there are any number of things that could happen that would be multipliers to our current budget philosophy, and maybe not this year, it could be into the next fiscal year. But my point is that with regard to the potential multiplier effect of an employee an effective grant writer, if we know that there are grants that are coming down in public works and sustainability, and we know that there are always police grants that are available to be procured, and we know that HCD and, uh, economic development and, uh, housing are all priorities for the town. If we had a person who was good at writing grants, cuz a significant portion of it is whether or not you can write them well, um, then it would be good for everyone. Um, and I think, um, like, you know, if there's a a vest for bulletproof vest or something grants that come up, and we used to, I, just as a hypo, it's something that we did before in a different place. You know, you ask somebody who can write that grant, and the police officers can tell you all the information, then they don't have to spend their time writing the grant, they just have to give you the information.
Okay, real quick, um, uh, Director Chung, I know that folks are, are, are fighting real hard to get like a point one eight or whatever, um, just as a quick reminder, because we're basing this tax just on the revised expenditures doing quick and dirty, we haven't fully accounted for the new, the added revenues. Have you? Okay.
One point eight-three is the, you know, our reduction of one point eight-three.
Only for the expenditure reduction, we are reducing the tax rate by one point eight-three.
Okay. Alright, so.
Uh, is it too late to take back a vote, can you take back a vote ever? You can't take that.
No, no take backs.
Okay, but did, we, we did just vote, I'm, I'm getting so tired, we did just vote already on that one then.
No, not the grants coordinator.
Oh, we didn't, oh, okay. So I, uh, I just wanna point out, cuz I, I agree with the spirit of this addition, however, uh, we've just put three other positions in the government that the staff indicated were absolutely essential. On hold for six months, we are adding one staff member to the HCD staff. So another person to supervise, and we have new ARPA staff. And I think, I don't know if we're fully staffed up yet, are we fully staffed up on ARPA? No, we're not fully staffed up on ARPA, which is all about grants management of seventeen point eight million dollars. And I wonder whether, in fact, we have enough staff to really properly supervise another full-time staff member and the grants therein. I, I am concerned about that, and furthermore, when, when, uh, ARPA funding ends if we were to keep some of the ARPA staff who are presumably going to be expert, and are, our ARPA manager is an expert grants manager. If we wanted to keep them, we might want them in that kind of a capacity, and that might be the perfect role for them, so I'm just putting all that out there.
I would say in response to that, that I, I would feel differently about this if I didn't have personal practical experience in actually doing a grants operation in this way. And so, I am completely comfortable if we don't end up doing this. But it would seem to me that it would be the best potential multiplier of everyone's activities and revenue.
Alright, and I just wanna make sure that we, we don't have a lot of miscommunication, um, we did not add an HCD person. We did not add an FTE, what we did, yep, yep, there was a transfer. There was a repurpose FTE, we did not increase FTE. Um, what we're also not necessarily talking about, I mean, if you wanna talk about full-time equivalents. This person is in the budget in a part-time capacity, so if you wanna argue, we're adding a half of a FTE. It's not a full one, um, because what we're doing is taking this person from being part-time to full-time. So I just-
Somebody who's on staff wants to apply for this position instead, I don't care, I don't care, I just think it's-
Let's, let's get ready to vote, we've talked about this one a lot.
Thank you.
The ARPA, so what is your proposal?
Proposal is, is to use. Fifty-two thousand dollars. It doesn't appear in the tax.
And the tax rate, alright, so we got, we have, uh, uh, two items on the floor.
I think it's one.
I think it's, let's make sure, alright. Alright. Okay, so. So we're gonna do two votes. We're gonna do two votes, alright, just to keep it clean. Alright, so let's add another one, one for, alright, so. Yep, all those in favor of increasing, yep. Um, the part-time grants position to full-time, the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars. All those in favor of adding that, uh, full-time grants coordinator position? One, two, three, four, five, six, okay, now, here's the question at hand. All those in favor of reallocating that fifty-two thousand dollars from the general fund to ARPA? All those in favor of moving it to ARPA? All those in favor of moving it to ARPA? Alright, so we only got two.
Thank you, thank you guys, I really appreciate it, and I think the, the staff is gonna benefit, so thank you, I appreciate it.
So it stays in the general fund, so, looks like we are at. Alright, we are now at, what is it, um, one points, one point eight? Alright, one point eight-three, alright, last item of the night, and I also just wanna say uh, we do not have the mental capacity to deal with our other items on the agenda, I will have to fi- figure something out. Alright, we can do it by email, and we can deal with this via, we can deal with the, um.
I know that it's nickel and diming, but what about putting the thousand dollars in ARPA? I would be comfortable with that, and that helps to get to the rate that Kara is trying to get to.
The snacks.
The snacks thousand, cuz that, I mean, that is outreach or community involvement.
Alright, let's, let's, let's focus, cuz we're on the last thing, alright, last item that we have on this agenda right now is to talk through the proposals, no, we're voting. Vote on the, uh, ARPA expenditures related to street rehab and traffic calming. Okay, um, so there's three items on the table regarding street rehab. We have Councilmember DeBala's proposal of one hundred thousand dollars. We have Councilmember Gibson's proposal of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then we have Councilmember Small and Fulcher's proposal for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? So has any council members modified their approach or thoughts around the dollar amount for the street rehab proposals? Correct.
And remind me, uh, David, is it three fifty was what, what?
I was just gonna do that, so, um, the total amount for the street rehabilit- excuse me, street rehabilitation is three hundred and fifty thousand. It's three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the total amount for sidewalks is seven fifty and. I'm confused by traffic calming. Right, so traffic calming and sidewalks is three fifty. So the decrease of traffic calming should be traffic calming and sidewalks.
So, so this ninety-two is not a thing. Ninety-two doesn't exist.
Ninety-two is a thing. It just is not a complete description.
So there's two, so ninety, so what you're saying currently is that ninety and ninety-two are two separate tranches of money.
Ninety-one and ninety.
I'm saying ninety, street rehab is also traffic calming. Is that right, Director Braithwaite? Turn your microphone off.
We have three hundred and fifty reduction for, I'll say, so SHA ADA was one fifty. I'm having a hard time finding it. Uh, streets was three fifty down from five hundred.
I, I'd like to say about this while we're looking these things up is that I would much rather keep this same as in this budget.
Street, it's three hundred for new sidewalks, uh, three hundred for traffic calming and one fifty for, uh. SHA ADA.
That sounds right.
Can you repeat that again, Director Braithwaite?
So. The number was seven fifty, so one fifty is SHA ADA. And.
It's not on here.
Looking for city ADA and then we're looking for new sidewalks and traffic calming. So three hundred thousand for new sidewalks and traffic calming. Three hundred thousand for city ADA and one hundred and fifty for state highway ADA. That's a total of seven hundred and fifty in that piece. And then the, the streets was from five hundred reduced to three fifty.
Okay, my first on, on, uh, advocacy for this particular issue as far as my name is next to it is. That if we're going to be making substantive changes to any of the traffic calming stuff or, or things by code. That we should wait until we have done those things to make sure that we are effectively spending the money. As per the wishes of this particular council. That's my premise.
You're, you're suggesting that we keep these things, keep the money in here, not do these decreases. But have a policy discussion before it's actually done.
I am theoretically comfortable with that. Um, I don't personally see a distinction between doing that and adding money back into the budget. From reserve if we have a proper implementation strategy.
My concern about that, Councilmember Small, is again, you are later over, well, again, we're talking about ARPA dollars. So the money would be there potentially. Um, but, uh, we are proposing about. Two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of ads.
Is this ARPA money? Oh, then, don't mind me, man. I just, I want to make sure we hit the number. And if we're effectively spending the ARPA money as per the staff, I got no problems.
Okay, so would you like to withdraw your name from the street rehab, complete cut from the budget?
Yes, if that's ARPA money, then yes.
My name was on, it's not written down exactly how, what I said, which was that I thought that there should be a hold on the money until we reevaluate.
Yeah.
How it's being.
I'm saying the same thing as her.
Okay.
And wherever, however we need to put a hold on it, I don't care.
Okay.
I just want it, I just don't want it is to be doing that if we already know we got problems, just.
And are you referring to problems in policy with our street rehab?
With the street rehab, we were talking about, you know, are we able to push it further into the future? How often we're replacing streets? So that's, that's one problem. And then as far as traffic calming. And new sidewalks, that's another problem. So there's problems and all, like I find all these things problematic. And think that they need to be reevaluated.
And in theory, there is at least a legislative proposal that exists. We just haven't had a chance to vote on. Based on what we were told by you guys.
Okay, so, so let's make sure that we're, we're focused on the budget because it is almost one AM.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so if Councilmember Small and Folcher are just, um, want there to be a policy in place. Both, uh, around, uh, traffic calming and street rehab. That's something that we can deal with in the, um, I'm thinking this probably will need to be a resolution.
I'm happy to deal with it in a resolution.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
And then, um, so that means we can withdraw that item. The three hundred and fifty thousand, we're gonna make sure we leave a note to make sure we deal with that as part of the resolution.
Yes.
Um, the.
Yeah, put it in there so we don't forget.
Yep.
And if that's also ninety-two, that has my name on it, then that's fine with me too. I just can't tell.
He's on a row ninety-two.
Uh, yeah, row ninety-two on here is also me for decreasing. So I, if, same thing for that one.
Okay, so we can take that one out now, so that we're gonna leave the same note for Councilmember Small.
Yes.
So we're gonna withdraw this. Alright, I'm trying to just make sure. Alright, so now we got Councilmember Dabala.
Okay, so, um, I would look to work perhaps with Councilmember Folcher. On adding a, a third section to this ordinance slash resolution to talk about specific policies. Okay, um, the hundred thousand that I'm proposing cutting is because there are. Two things in the pipe. Well, wait a minute, we're on roads, right? Okay, so on roads, I effectively went back to the road list and looked at the, the. The ones that were the least, the highest rated in quality, the last on the list. And took them and that was about a hundred thousand dollars. It was actually ninety-seven. But the point being, I was in effect stretching it from twenty to twenty-two years or maybe it's twenty-three years, actually. Um, but I was trying to anticipate that we might do that. So that's how I got that number. You can agree or not, but that's how I got the number.
Okay.
And if I.
Yep.
Um, and then the number that I, I reached in terms of street rehabilitation was, uh, I left in, um, the streets that are. Uh, sidewalks or work is being done on. I walked or drove by the streets. That are here proposed to be cut, uh, or, uh, or to be resurfaced. Couple of them in Ward Three, I don't believe need to be resurfaced this year. In Ward Two, there are several streets that are potentially, or, or are a part of the New Hampshire Bike Project. And that should not be done until we have the, uh, all the plans and start the New Hampshire Bike Project. It wouldn't make sense for us to do that. So that's why those items were, uh, meant to be pushed back a year.
Alright, Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you. I would just say that, uh, we spent a lot of time putting together the road, uh, repair work. Uh, and developing a, uh, I put in air quotes, scientific approach to, uh. To identifying those roads that have to be done and then included, uh. Whatever radar or whatever, uh, scanning of the, all the city streets and, and looking at, uh, how. How long streets last and coming up with the twenty-year number. And maybe there's some time where again, we can talk about that policy and see if maybe it's really. You know, twenty-five years or whatever, but I, I don't think that, uh, council members. Uh, should be judging, uh, whether a street needs repair or not. I think it's, uh. Uh, I think we need to use the more scientific approach.
So I do, oh, sorry, there's one more.
I just wanted to say, um, I just wanted, uh, the, the city to have the flexibility to deal with. What I believe are exigent circumstances in areas of cut-through traffic and other things. And that's the reason why I wanted this current reduction so that we could pivot if we needed to.
Alright, Councilmember Dabala.
Yeah, I wanted to ask the, um, Director Braithwaite the question about the New Hampshire Alley. Um, being, being on, on service roads, being on the list. So independent of. Of the budget, if, had you thought, had you thought about that or would you recommend delaying that?
There were two service roads. One was north of the planned bike route, one is south. The condition of the service road is so bad that if we don't resurface it, we're gonna be rebuilding that street. Uh, six inch depth and more. So we would definitely mill and pave that street now. Uh, our recommendation still remains a five hundred thousand dollar a year. Um, process for street resurfacing. If we go down lower, and I see one proposal at two seventy, which would leave us with an eighty thousand dollar budget. Uh, which isn't even worth doing. We, we don't want to mobilize the street, street crew for eighty thousand dollars.
Alright, let's vote. Okay, there are two items on the table.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I am tired and I'm, my brain's not working at this point during this ARPA conversation. I, I had understood we were not going to proceed with ARPA, so I'm a little confused right now, but, um, I think it's just because I'm extremely tired. So, um. We have three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and six hundred and fifty-seven. I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars approximately of ARPA additions that we have made as per my calculations. To the ARPA budget. No, that's not what you have.
That is not what I have.
That includes the four communication boards that we talked about earlier that I don't know if we voted on. I can't remember voting on that. The bulletin boards. Oh, there it is. It's right there. Yeah, but we didn't remove, yeah, oh, because it was a new thing. Yeah, anyway. Three hundred and fifty-seven thousand is what I show. Um, and that would mean to me, and this is where I was not totally understanding the process. That we would somehow need to cut unless we dug into direct cash. Oh.
Highlight again, those, those added costs because it's not three hundred from the.
It's not.
Yep, the twenty thousand dollars, the twenty hasn't been included and just, yeah. You can see down at the corner, it's two hundred and forty.
So.
Six hundred and fifty-seven.
Does that have the fifty-seven, four fifty-seven? It has the forty thousand in bike funds. It has a hundred and twelve. Oh, you know what? I think I may have doubled my bike matching fund. That's, that's why, that's why, whoops. See, there's always a problem. Yeah, okay, so to, thanks, that number is, so two, what is your number?
It should be two forty-six.
Good, okay, yeah, 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 we're on the same page. Okay, so then, um, sorry, my bad. Um, so. Uh, so we're saying that we would need to cut to, I just trying to get clarity here. So are we saying we need to cut about that? That, well, that quantity from the capital improvement recommendations in order to find money?
No, 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 I hear what you're saying. Okay, you don't necessarily have to do that, right? Um, but what will happen is it means that when we have our ARPA discussion, right? There's going to be new items that we're, that will be on the list, that we will then have to determine. How we want to fund, right? Because what happened was there's a couple of projects that, um. Uh, the ARPA manager explained that we're gonna have to make decisions about anyway, things that hadn't started. So there was a hundred thousand dollars workforce. There's, you know, we of course have to figure out how much we want to fund for the, um, navigators. We still have direct cash assistance. We may still have programs in ARPA. That once the dust settles with twenty-three dollars, we may see where those actuals are. And we may actually have a better outlook on what, what those outlooks, um, what those numbers are as well. So what I was saying is that if the council wants to make sure that there's no net change to ARPA. As a result of what we've just done in terms of moving things. Then we would have to look at it now in terms of figuring out what we will want to move back to the general, but keep in mind. If you're moving stuff back to the general fund, you're changing your tax rate. So, so I would advise that if there, if there is a desire, we vote on the street rehab. We see where the ARPA numbers are. We have our ARPA manager, just take a look at where we land. And that is something that we can address through the resolution and also when we have an additional conversation around the remainder of the ARPA budget.
I'm in favor of the marriage proposal.
I just, I, I just want to make sure that we are not, that. I'm not really in favor at the moment of cutting into the direct cash program very much at all. I'm not really in favor of cutting some of those other programs. And so I'm also concerned about whether we have put too much on ARPA. That's, that might be a little bit more than we're ready to handle. And so I just want to ask if you'll allow me one question, please, of our Director Public Works. If we were to cut two hundred K, let's say, from the capital improvement fund. Where would you see that coming from if we had to, if we had to? That would not really crimp the city in terms of what we really must do.
I don't, well, and I'm not clear about what it is because we had a hundred and ten thousand. A one million, one hundred thousand dollars for street and sidewalk work that was moved to ARPA. And so, cutting two hundred from that.
That's, that's what I, that's my understanding of what we could be doing if we didn't touch all the other things that are currently in ARPA. Yeah, I mean, just.
Where to cut two hundred from the one million, one hundred?
Yeah, I mean.
Add first though, that there's, there's a one point. As proposed, the FY twenty-four budget includes about one point, one million dollars of additional. Not additional, of unallocated ARPA dollars. We've tonight added maybe another, subtracted from that, two hundred and twenty some odd thousand dollars.
Forty-six.
Two hundred and forty-six, so there's seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars in ARPA dollars. Assuming that all of these infrastructure projects are included in the ARPA fund. So you're working with seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars worth of unallocated ARPA dollars.
After the one point one million.
Including the one point one million of infrastructure.
So, excuse me, you're saying that if the one point one million is included as already allocated. Then there's still seven hundred thousand left.
Yes.
Thank you. Did you hear? I think you, you might have just said the same thing. So what I understand, the dirt. David, to have said, it's after midnight. I can call you David. Um. Including the one point one million as allocated ARPA. And the two hundred and forty-six that we added, we still have seven hundred and something fifty-seven, I think you said.
Seven hundred to eight hundred, I'm bad at math.
And that is unallocated, not related to what was allocated to, for example, direct cash assistance or anything. It's just totally unallocated.
According to the proposed budget. So I have to go through the budget and see exactly how much has been allocated for each of those programs. But according to the proposed budget, the unallocated funds. Including the two hundred some odd thousand dollars that we discussed tonight, there's seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, available for you all to make a decision on how to use.
Oh, wow, okay.
In other words, there's a lot more flexibility in ARPA than there is in the general fund. Thus, everybody wanted.
I see. Oh, okay. I, I did not hear that when the ARPA manager spoke to us the other night. So I don't know if it wasn't presented, but that's a lot of, that, that could have.
I think it's allocated to out years for projects that may not happen.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was saying. Like, so when we developed the ARPA plan, it was for like a four to five-year plan. So there's money that's set aside for future years that we could decide we want to redirect. Okay, alright, I gotta call this vote because I am folding. Alright, vote on the table. Do we want to, uh, first item, decreasing the street rehab budget. Councilmember Dabala has proposed by one hundred thousand dollars. All those in favor of moving forward with a reduction in the street rehab budget by one hundred thousand dollars? Alright, we've got four votes.
Wait, who's for?
Uh, it is Folcher, Gibson.
I got it.
Alright, all those in favor, Councilmember Gibson's proposal to reduce the street rehab by two hundred and seventy thousand. Alright, so the one hundred thousand passes. Alright, let's get to, uh, sidewalks, traffic calming. I'm gonna go ahead and treat these together. Um. All those in favor of new sidewalk budget cuts, um, Councilmember Dabala proposed of one hundred thousand dollars.
Can I just say how I got that briefly? Just briefly, no, never mind that.
It's one AM, it's one AM.
Everybody. Go with Sydney, go with God, yes.
Okay, one, this, voting?
Voting. Decrease in the sidewalk budget, one hundred thousand dollars. Decrease in the sidewalk budget, one hundred thousand dollars. Alright. It passed. We got we got four votes.
Five because she just waved her hand.
Uh council member Hanzak, are you a part of the sidewalk cut crew? Okay. Alright. Last item, decrease ADA, new sidewalk traffic calming, council member Gibson, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Keep in mind, this is the opposite. Any hands?
Well, wait a minute, this is, this, this, this is two different things put together.
But my understanding and Director Braithwaite remind me, I thought that these things were combined, the ADA and the, the sidewalk.
Uh my suggestion would be that there was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar pot of money for S H A ADA, City ADA and new sidewalk and traffic calming. So we just considered it a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then let us decide where the remaining funds that you still keep in there are gonna go.
That's good.
So the total was seven hundred and fifty thousand?
We had three fifty first streets, that's now down to two fifty. We had seven fifty for sidewalk and traffic calming.
Again, that's where I was getting confused cuz the sidewalk and traffic calming was together. And so now we're talking about ADA, new sidewalk and traffic calming, but the sidewalk and traffic calming is together.
But the ADA is not.
But the ADA is not.
Then that's what's confused me.
Yeah, but it's all in the seven fifty.
It's only seven fifty. So in other words, adding another eighty-seven thousand dollars to the cuts we've already done.
Right. Alright, but what is, uh so council member Gibson, would you like to modify your, your request?
So is, some of that is covered in what we just voted on?
Correct.
So how much of, uh? I don't know. So we got, we have agreed, so it doesn't include street rehab.
But rehab, we already voted on, sir.
No, 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 but it, it's not included in this amount. But what is included in this amount is the new sidewalks, a hundred thousand. So let's just turn, turn this down to eighty-seven. Rather than a hundred and eighty-seven, cuz that's the difference, right?
Okay, so council member Gibson has modified it to eighty-seven thousand?
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
So we are proposing to reduce the um the ADA work by eighty-seven thousand dollars. Uh council member Gibson is proposing that?
That's great.
Um I, I will say, I'm, I'm not in favor of reducing ADA work, just because I think it's important for people to be able to. No, we had just, what we just voted on was the new sidewalks. But not.
New sidewalks as opposed to the retrofits.
Alright, we're gonna go with the vote. ADA sidewalk-related projects is what's left in this eighty-seven thousand. All those in favor of reducing ADA work. Alright, it does not pass. Okay. And we're done.
You still have bulletin boards?
Oh, did I not vote on the bulletin board?
And the stormwater.
Oh, shoot, the stormwater. I am so sorry. Real quick, all those in favor of the bulletin boards? Alright, bulletin boards pass. Alright, let's do stormwater real quick. I totally forgot about stormwater.
So it's, is that on here? Did it make it to, yes, it did. Okay.
So he, yeah, so go ahead, council member.
Yeah, so what we're asked, uh what I'm asking is that we would add, uh we would increase, we have a fee, thesis. We would increase it by a dollar, a dollar fifty for, for every five hundred square feet of, of uh impermeable surface.
What would that be to the?
What, what, and what it would produce is a pilot program that works with multiple private properties as a pilot project because we don't work. Generally, the city doesn't do its stormwater work on private properties. It would be a way of showing that we can do project, projects on, on private properties with, with contributions by the residents or the bu- building owner, but it, it, but the city would uh is asking for a contractor-supported implementation. And, and I had originally talked fifteen thousand, talking with, with uh uh Darryl Braithwaite. I increased to this acc- this amount and also made sure that it's contractor-supported. So that doesn't take as much time from our staff. It would again, give us a model of doing, uh building on the, the hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty thousand dollars we spent on, we spent on con- um a, a, a study, resilient study. The pilot builds upon the valuable research and analysis developed from the city's stormwater resilience study. Site selection for the plot would utilize this research. A successful pilot project would be used as a model for more comprehensive contractor-supported technical assistance stormwater program for eligible property owners. Again, multi-property, not a single property owner, but multiple properties that have had flooding problems that we've already identified.
Council member Folcher?
Uh I mean, I think that the Montgomery County rainscapes program is problematic because it taxes everybody and then the people that can afford to do the work cuz they have more money, get it done and they get reimbursed for it. And so I'm just concerned about this being another program where the wealthier homeowners that can afford to do the work are gonna get together and do it, and then they're also gonna take that money that came from everybody.
This, um all I'm just gonna say about this is that according to Darryl, it is how much per average house?
It would add a dollar fifty to the the base unit and five hundred square foot are average.
Most properties pay a hundred dollars or less currently. So now my brain just fogged up, but if they're paying a hundred dollars, that means they have
Hundred and three.
Four, four base units. And so for adding a dollar fifty for every base unit, sorry, it would be six dollars. It would be a s- average six dollar increase for for our, our moderate homes. There will be some people that it'll be significantly more.
The dis- and the distinction is it's based on impermeable surfaces, not even, it's really, it's not spread out like our general, general funds are. It's based on how mu- you pay more if you've got more impermeable surface and that makes it a little bit more equitable.
I'm just, um I will say that I am uh concerned about um making modifications again to our stormwater fee, um because we recently have just gone, undergone a very twenty twenty-two, we just undertook a pretty massive reconfiguration of our stormwater structure, which impacted a number of households where they've had to pay more when we move to the process of um having the stormwater fee aligned with the amount of impervious surface that um properties have. So uh I, 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 we, we like to talk a lot about um the tax rate, but the stormwater fee is another tax. And so I, I do think that um because of the recent work that uh the city undertook to modify um like in, a, a year ago um and it resulted in an increase in the stormwater fee for a number of residents. I think it's only fair for us to give them a little bit of a reprieve. Council member Stevens?
I would just say that uh the amount of money obviously is uh fairly low for projects, so we could, we would be maybe one model project. And it still might not be enough money to do them if, if I think of the properties in Ward Four that really need the assistance.
Um if, if I might add, I'm sorry. I just wanna say, um uh experience, th- this is not a, a new idea, but what this, if, if, if a pilot project were successful, it could be used to attract outside funding. We would not be starting from scratch. We would say we actually did something and we prove that these two or three uh flooded homeowners received uh the technical assistance and the money to do something that helps mitigate the problem. Then in the future, that can be used as to seek uh external funding for stormwater, which is another one of those funds that is increasing in terms of its availability, federal and state.
Hear you, but I, I do wanna align myself with council member Folcher around the equity issues associated with something like that. Alright.
I would, I, I, I would like to say that I having also thought about this a lot. So, so we have asked for a study. We do not have the results yet. Likely it will suggest that we undertake some kind of pilot project. However, we don't have it yet and we don't know what it is and we don't know how much. My second concern is whether it is even legal to change the stormwater fee without having advertised that we were going to do so.
Director Braithwaite, do you have a thought on that?
I was just recalling when we changed the fee last time, it's by ordinance, so we would have to have an ordinance.
Very full room a couple of nights in a row. That was a much bigger increase. But it said to me that people wanna know what we're doing. So I, so I love the pilot project idea. I believe we can find a neighborhood that will, that will be, that will meet some of the equity concerns. But we don't have that yet. And my bigger concern, which I've shared with council member Gibson, is raising the fee without the proper notice.
I would suggest, we had a lot of discussion, it's time to call the vote.
Let's call the vote. Alright, let's rock and roll. Alright, so the item before a council, um and I'm gonna kinda treat these as uh two items. Uh one, yeah, there are two. There's one to um increase the fee and one to, well, it looks like there's two separate items.
Did you want both um council member Gibson, first was fifteen thousand and the next was fifty thousand?
Okay, so we're gonna withdraw the fifteen? Alright, so the.
Then where's the fifty coming from?
A dollar fifty for your base rate.
Stormwater fees.
It's the same issue, just changed.
Oh, okay, so you're not withdrawing the proposal to raise fees? Okay, I misunderstood.
All those in favor of increasing the stormwater fee to fund the pilot program? Please say aye. Alright, doesn't pass. Alright, so we're all done officially.
Alright, can I just, can I just say for the record, so we can go home? I support you in spirit. I will agree with an amendment later after the LIDC study is done to consider what should come next.
And, and I have put already and I have already, I have already put on the list that we are go- that, that the council wants to look at in the stormwater fee, cuz if we're gonna go through all that headache. We should probably be thinking about more than one.
Alright, well, I'm sorry.
I'm going to. We're not gonna do.
We're not gonna be able to get to this tonight.
And so this is agenda item two, this proposal that I have with two, for the budget ordinance. So we're gonna hold on that till whenever.
Alright, so just to make sure council, make sure the council understands, I need everybody's attention. I haven't closed this thing out cuz I need everybody to pay attention because this is important. Don't fall. Alright, real quick. So in terms, real quick, in terms of next steps, what is going to happen? Um staff are gonna finalize everything and, and make sure that we know where the tax rate and everything is gonna be. Um we will be preparing ordinances um related to all of the diff- the budget, the tax rate, as well as the stormwater. Uh we have, uh I, I believe now, I'm gonna check with our city attorney that we need to develop a resolution. Yep, the resolution. Yep, that will clear. Yep, that will clearly communicate um the policy, direction and activities that we want to make sure that council does as a direct result of this budgeting process. We will address committees. Um we could do them really quickly next week, or I could just send you all an email to ask you which committees you wanna be a part of. Alright, and with that. I second that. We have, uh can members of council commit to not sending any questions about anything related to the budget until three PM tomorrow?
I won't be up until three o'clock.
Alright. Wonderful. Okay, so I think we're done. Motion to adjourn. Alright, thank you all so much.